I'll call this board of county commissioners meeting in order September. Commissioner Langley will say the prayer and I'll say the prayers as we begin.
Let us pray. Tell him our Father, we bless you and your army and we are thankful for your mercy. And now, Father, we ask that you would touch our hearts and minds concerning the affairs of your people. Bless us, Father, and we'll be blessed. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Stand first, Father.
Our flag is lifted to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, are we approving the agenda? Are we approving the consent agenda?
We're approving the agenda.
Okay.
The consent agenda will come later.
Okay. I have an item that I would like to add. We'll take two minutes as an informational thing.
What would that be?
Market-based incentives.
Okay. We'll put that as number five.
Okay.
Excuse me. We'll make that number sixteen, Hood, under consent.
Under consent.
Right after consent is over.
It's okay. It's not a part of consent.
Right. I got you.
Okay. My pen won't write.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I need to remove something. I need to have something removed.
Yeah. Do we have anything that needs to be removed or added to the agenda?
Under items for discussion, item number eleven, the town of Bellhaven requests for reimbursement.
Okay.
I'd like to put that off till next month.
Okay. I'll second that.
That's a motion.
Got a motion and a second.
Why would we be putting that off for yet another month? Punishment for the town of Bellhaven, is that what it's about?
If that is what you're thinking.
Yes, that's what I think it is.
Do I have a second on Mr. Langley's motion?
I seconded it.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? What was that figure?
Five-two.
Five-two. Public comments. And when you come forward, I'm going to give you three minutes and then I'll say time and then you have fifteen seconds to close. So Mrs. Tickens would come up. Mrs. Tickens. See if Mrs. Tickens is outside.
Speaking.
Mrs. Tickens?
Or Pickens. Susan Pickens. They got it wrong. It's P.
Yeah, they got it wrong. Yeah, it's Pickens, not Tickens.
It's what?
It's Pickens. They just put it. It's up here wrong.
Is it Mrs. Pickens?
Susan Pickens.
Okay. It's Pickens would have... Okay. You have three minutes and I'll say time and then you have fifteen seconds to close.
Okay. I'm asking the county commissioners to make a resolution to make our state troopers, police and deputies carry Narcan in our county, which they do not at this time. Narcan nasal spray is used to reverse the effects of heroin and pain medicine otherwise called opiates or opioids when the victim is unconscious and dying. Mayor Hodges was told the city police depend on the paramedics getting to an overdose first. A lot of times, the law gets to an overdose first in a rural setting. In the past, ambulance personnel were told to wait until the law went into a victim's home first. Overdoses are the grandparent who forgets she took her pain meds an hour ago so she takes more pills or puts on another pain patch. It's a teenager who is three times more apt to get addicted to pain pills who swallows his pills running away from the narcotics detective. It is the teenager who drank alcohol with some pills at a party and no one called 911 for the fear of getting arrested. It's a college-educated, middle-aged professional with a needle in his arm or the daughter who tried suicide with her deceased mom's hospice meds. Detective Rose said the cost of Narcan and getting sued are two obstacles in the sheriff's department. There are government grants for rural communities that get the cost down to $20 per officer and Narcan does not expire for two years. The insurance, the in-service is one hour. The 911 Good Samaritan Law of North Carolina provides immunity from drug possession for the victim and the person calling 911. This does not include trafficking. The law applies to officers trying to save a life also. Of all the equipment an officer has to carry, the size of the nasal spray is only two fingers. Narcan also has no effects and will not harm a victim overdosing on other meds. In 2012, there were 1,100 deaths in North Carolina from opiate overdoses. Rural communities like ours have a 45% higher death rate. Opiate deaths surpasses automobile deaths in the United States. My fear of why Narcan is not given in our county is some of those in power might think a junkie who odies gets what's coming to him or her. Opiate addiction has no racial or cultural, age or geographic borders. The next overdose will be someone that one of us in this place right now will know and that life can be saved for only $20. Thanks.
Mrs. Stokes? Mrs. Stokes?
Yes, Stokes. Stokes? Yes, Stokes.
Okay, we'll go on. Earl Carney.
My name is Earl Carney. I'm a resident of Beaufort County. I'm here this afternoon to request that the county develop a business model, a business requirement that those people engaged in selling propane particularly or any product or service, that they list that price publicly on the door, on the inside of brochure. Propane, I went in to buy propane Tuesday. There was a gentleman in there that apparently had purchased a prepaid account at three bucks. Now, the propane's down. He wanted to cancel that. He asked, "What's the price of propane today?" And he was told in my presence, I was just standing there listening, that I can't give you that price without the size of the tank and without all these requirements. Now, I step up, that fellow exited the door, I said, "How much is propane under my account?" She said, "$1.99." I didn't ask how they developed that. I did ask how, I said, "Give me a copy of the methodology that you use to service my account, how you do that." She said, "I can't do that." Now, if I go down here, down the street and stop at Hess to fill up, I can look up there and I can see what the price is. But this propane is a shell game in this state, in this county and in this city. We need an ordinance, that was the word I was looking for. We need an ordinance that requires any business to post a price. I noticed we've got a restaurateur from Bellhaven in here this evening. You go in, you get a menu, you get a price on that. Fish, three bucks. You go in there and buy some propane. I couldn't even get her to print out how they developed that price for my account. Now, if you've got a Plan A, B, C, Medicare supplement plans are the best example of that around. They've got A through J. All of those are, A through J is the same, I don't care what insurance company sells it. But it's defined, A is defined and J is defined. We need an ordinance in this county that requires a business to post the price of the products that they're selling. That seems like a no-brainer, but it isn't. And I would appreciate it. I'd like to come back next week or next month and get your feedback on this because two years ago, I know, we had some folks down south that were overcharging during the winter on propane. Now, it's like hunting season. This is a good time, get them while you can. This is America. This is capitalism. I'm not looking for a socialist response to this, but I'm looking for a capitalist response in that you post the price so I can compare it. And if you want to bundle these things, whatever the requirements are, develop a plan, a brochure that defines how you are going to market this stuff. Don't just walk in there blind and ask for it like somebody, you know, that has no idea. It's wrong and it's almost unethical. But I'll be back next month and I would appreciate it if you folks would think about this and give us a response. And those folks looking at this on television, call your commissioner and ask them to give this serious consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Harold Smith?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Harold Smith. I'm here this afternoon speaking on behalf of Citizens for Better Government. Our organization has expressed concern regarding the future of health care for Beaufort County residents in previous board meetings and to some of you individually. We agree that the issue is important for two reasons. First, change in the level and availability of health care in the county is inevitable. Second, there may also be some significant economic impact as a result of that change. We also agree that county leadership has little knowledge of the trends in rural health care and even less expertise in managing any such change. For this reason, Citizens for Better Government believe it is extremely important for you as representatives of this county to establish a strong working relationship with Vieden in order to prepare for the coming changes. Certainly, this would be helpful in planning the future delivery of both general health care and emergency medical service to the residents of this county. However, this relationship with Vieden must extend beyond officials of a local hospital and beyond the limited financial data released to the general public. We have urged you to establish some method of systematic communication and to try to obtain detailed information regarding patient census data and financial data. And you've indicated that you see the wisdom in establishing such a dialogue with Vieden. We're simply asking for a common sense approach to this issue and that the public be informed of your plans. In his remarks to the Committee of 100, Vieden CEO Michael Waldron reported little to us that isn't already known. What he did do was emphasize that major change is underway for Beaufort County. The question tonight, gentlemen, is who will decide what that change will be?
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, my name is Ricky Radcliffe and I'm from Bellhaven. And I am a part of the Bellhaven United Team. This year in Bellhaven, we have four seats up for our town government. We have three councils and one mayor seat. With me tonight, I have two of our guys that are running for council, Shane Hubers and Vic Cox. And we have come up tonight to try to start a relationship with the county commissioners. We feel like that it's very important in our town, in our growth, in the economic impact of our area, and most of all, our health care and EMF services. And we hope to get tonight, maybe at break time, that we can actually put the names with the faces. We've heard a lot about you guys. We know Frankie. We met Hood a while ago. But we'd like to get to know y'all better. And we also, we just think health care, you know, in our area is a big issue right now, as you all know. And in the EMF services, we think what the county is doing as far as EMF services is great for what's going on in our area. We need all we can get, especially with the training of the paramedics and things of that source. And we just thank you for that and what y'all are doing for health care. We also are very concerned about our economic development in our area. In the year 2000, we had approximately 2,600 population in Bellhaven. Now, we're down to about 1,500. So we need jobs, and I'm sure y'all hear that all the time. We need jobs and we need economic growth. And so we appreciate anything the county can do for us on that end of the county. And we hope to have a good relationship with all the commissioners. And I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'm going to mummuck this up. Atilia?
My name's Atilla Natsan. I am the president of the Pamlico Albemarle Wildlife Conservationists. We are a chapter of the North Carolina Wildlife Federation. And I just wanted to come say a few words about Blunt's Creek tonight and the Martin Marietta mine that's slated to open there soon. Basically, what's going to happen is that there is an existing mine in Craven County that's going to close from Martin Marietta and they're going to relocate in Beaufort County. So that means most of the jobs are actually going to be people who live outside of our county, who are just going to drive in a different direction now to go to work. So what we're doing is hurting our water, our land and our resources, our wildlife resources, to support jobs in a different county. The water that they're planning to use is aquifer water, which some people have started to refer to as fossil water. It will take hundreds of years to regenerate. So they're pulling this water up and they're going to be discharging 12 million gallons a day into Blunt's Creek, which is a brackish body of water. So they're going to be discharging 12 million gallons of fresh water into this creek, which over the course of a year is three, or is 4.3 billion gallons of water. So this is water that will not, within our lifetimes, regenerate into the aquifer. So they're just dumping this straight into the creek. So not only is it water that isn't replenishable, but it's also water that will affect the sensitive nature of the creek. The upper part of the creek where they're planning to dump is going to be permanently altered. The amount of flow that's going to be going into the creek is going to be so high that it's going to flood surrounding areas. It's also going to change the fish that can be caught there. It's going to affect the marinas that are now existing along it. It's going to change the tourism business that's related to charter fishing. It's going to change the reasons why people who live along Blunt's Creek live there now. I attended a recent barbecue that they had. It was so successful that a few hours before it was supposed to be over, they had sold out of food. So there is a lot of support for opposition to the current permit against, with the mine. We're not opposed to the mine itself, but there's a better way to use that water than to dump it straight into a creek that's going to affect what the residents of Beaufort County are able to do with it. And so I'd like to see the commissioners do something that comes out. So far, there's been no resolution to indicate any decision, not necessarily against the mine, but against this discharge permit. So we'd like to support a resolution to oppose the current discharge situation. Thank you.
Has Mrs. Stokes showed up yet? Has Mrs. Stokes outside? Has she come in yet?
She's accepted. Stokes.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six-one. Items for decision, Van Lutz.
I thought we were going to do market-based.
I'm sorry, Hood, you're right. Excuse me, Van.
Mr. Chairman.
Hood, go ahead.
We've got presentations as well.
We have three presentations.
I didn't know.
You have the item E, the three presentations first.
That's right. Ed Ryan, excuse me. I got ahead of myself.
Do I only have three minutes?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. The young man that just spoke hit on some of the things that I have prepared to say tonight, but I'm going to start a little bit differently. For 49 years, I was an educator. For the last 29 years of that career, I sat twice a month where you're sitting with my boards of education. I was a superintendent of schools or a school business official. So I know what it's like to sit where you're sitting. I know what it's like to listen to people who are asking you to do things that you may not be able to do or maybe don't support. I understand that. I'm not here for that reason. And I'm not here only because I believe that what Martin Marietta is going to do to this creek is going to dramatically change it. I was a science teacher and I knew from the very first meeting that I went to that what they were proposing was going to dramatically change the ecology, at least of the area where they were going to put the water in, if not the entire creek. I knew that. But being a lifelong Republican, a good American boy who served in the military from '64 to '66, I believed in the system. I thought the system would protect us. That's what it was there for. I knew we had a Department of Natural and Environmental Issues and I knew they'd step forward and do the right thing. They didn't. We didn't have them with us. We were by ourselves. They issued the permit. We have a lot of people with us, but what we don't have with us is the political establishment. They're willing to give away our natural resources so that mega companies can make an extra buck on the back of the taxpayers who are sitting in this room. That's what's going to happen. When they're done with this mine and there's a mess, guess who usually gets to clean that mess up? Us. Not them. I'll go through my regular agenda now and see if I can get through this. I don't want to keep you here all night. You have a lot of things to do. Reiterate, we've never opposed this mine. We've only been opposed to the way they plan to get rid of the water. It's never been about jobs. As a matter of fact, if they get rid of the water in a more reasonable way, that may create more jobs than the way they're going to do it. It's about 12 million gallons a day going into two small tributaries that go into Blunt's Creek. And that's wrong. Blunt's Creek is brackish. There was an alternative that was suggested early in the process. Swift Creek was suggested by the previous director of the D E N R. It was ignored. Department of Fisheries raised concerns and objections. They've been ignored. The D E C raised concerns. They've been ignored. Everybody that stands up for what we believe is right is ignored. Martin Marietta, D E N R, and the judges all did agree that where they put the water in is going to be dramatically changed. It will be a totally different ecosystem. I understand that it's a swamp and that's icky swamp water. Those are the words that Martin Marietta's lawyers used. It's icky water. And I understand that black water flows slowly, but it eventually is what feeds into Blunt's Creek. Put 12 million gallons into those two small streams, you no longer have slow-moving, icky streams. You have fast-running, freshwater streams that are going to be rust-colored within a couple of months because that's what comes out of the ground here. High iron content water that turns into rust as soon as it's exposed to the air. Gary put in my sprinkler system in my yard and one of the things he added was a chemical that has to be added in order to keep everything in the yard from turning brown. So we all know that. We live here. We know that. They all agreed that that's what was going to happen to the tributaries, but more importantly, they all agreed that there was going to be a minimum impact at the mouth of the creek. Now, isn't that great? Let me use some, what I think is logic for you. If they decide to dump 12 million gallons of sewage in Washington into the Pamlico River every day and the Department of Natural Resources said, "Well, we measured the effects out in the middle of the Pamlico Sound and it's a minimum impact," would it still be right to dump the sewage in at Washington? I'd like you to think about that. That's what they're proposing. Yeah, there's a big problem here, but it's no problem there, so it's no problem. We believe that this is a clear violation of the Clean Waters Act. It basically says you don't have the right to change a body of water. What they're saying is, "Well, it wasn't meant to cover these kinds of bodies of water. It was meant to cover waters that were navigatable. This is just a swamp, so it doesn't apply there." We'll find out about that. The unfortunate thing is, when we went to court, the administrative law judge not only ruled against doing something with the permit, he went further. What he basically said is that nobody here has any right to protest anything that any state agency does. You have no standing, that includes you, by the way, you have no standing. You cannot protest. You can't go to court as far as they're concerned. The public, the businesses, and even the River Foundation have no standing and have no right to take this any further. That's wrong. Hopefully, if nothing else gets overturned, that has to be overturned or all of us are in jeopardy. Our rights are being given away so that Martin Marietta can make a couple of extra bucks. Again, we have lots of people with us, but the establishment in Raleigh is not with us. Look at how this judge got to be a judge. If you want to find out something, check that out. On September 17th at 9:30, we're going to be in court here in town in the county courthouse. And those two issues are going to be paramount. Hopefully, we get several hundred people to show up. We want to fill that courtroom. We want the people who are sitting there, listening to this, to understand that the people of this county are not going to sit by and just let this happen. They've given the permit. That doesn't mean it's the end of the process. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm not going away. I've never protested anything in my life. I sat for 29 years doing what you're doing. When I came through that door and looked at a room full of people, I said, "Oh, my God, what did I do wrong this month? Who's going to take a shot at me? How much am I going to have to defend myself?" I know how you feel when you sit there. I'm not trying to do that to you. You guys haven't done anything. But that's part of the problem. You haven't done anything. To me, I've lived my life by one precept, and that's do the right thing. When you get to the bottom line and you have choices, you do the right thing, you're never going to have a problem. And I'm telling you right now, doing nothing is not the right thing. It's time for you, our elected officials, to take a position and to support us, help preserve Beaufort County's most valuable resource, its waterways. I moved here because of that and so did a lot of other people. And some of you that have lived here all your life, you know that better than we do. I've had the opportunity to live in a couple of different places. I chose to live here because it's so beautiful. We have to keep that that way. We don't need to give that away for a few extra bucks. It's time for all of us to do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Stand right there. Stand right there for a minute. Does anyone have anything that they want to ask me? Ed?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What about the pH? Did you say something about the pH?
Yeah. The water coming out of the ground is freshwater. It'll have a pH of around seven. I'm going to use round numbers. That's about a neutral. If you have a swimming pool, you've had to deal with pH If you have a swimming pool, you've had to deal with pH problems in your swimming pool. The water coming out of a swamp has a pH of around four. It's very acidic. You all know that, too. Anything having to do with the swamps or with the pine trees, with them decaying, it's acid. If you have soil around your house and you have a garden, you know that the soil's probably very acidic. That's acid water we're putting freshwater in. We're going to dramatically change the pH. Organisms that live in a pH environment of four, 4.5, cannot live in an environment of seven. They just can't live there. They die. They will be replaced. They'll be replaced by some other kind of life forms. I understand that. That's why I said, "To me, it's really not about ecology. I'm not a tree-hugging idealist. I'm a realist. I know things change, but we don't have to let them change so a company can make a couple of extra bucks and stick us with the bill in the long run." That's wrong. We need to make them do the right thing. Every time I've been around the Martin Marietta guys, I walk up to them, and I tell them, "You should be ashamed of yourself." They know what's right and what's wrong, and they choose to do what's wrong.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we have, Blunt's Creek is a?
Blackish water.
Yes.
Blunt's Creek. Yeah, Gary straightened me out. I was calling it Blunt's.
Wait till we get to another issue later on. I'm going to yell that again. Is a blackish water. And it's, we know from some of the studies I even looked at, the state and stuff like that, it's going to have an impact on that waterway. Now, Little Creek is a, if I recall correctly, is freshwater.
Yes, it is.
So it would have very little, if any, impact on Little Creek.
Exactly. It has about the same pH as the water coming.
As the water. And so it's not a coastal water. Mr. Chairman, when I ran for election, it was one of the things I looked at, and I'm the same here. I love this county, and the resources we have, to me, are very important. And any damage that we do to one of our resources is going to have a negative impact on the county and the residents, fish, who hunt. And I see this as having an impact. Now, we have no control. There's really nothing we can do as a county. We don't have the ordinances, and this is a state and federal issue. But the residents of this county are fighting it. And you're right, there was a good turnout at the picnic, and I remember the last year was it also a good turnout for the picnic. So I'm going to make a motion, a very simple motion. I think that will show the concern that we have for our resources in this county. And my motion is as follows. The Beaufort County Board of Commissioners supports the rights of citizens of Beaufort County to protect their recreational, aesthetic, and economic interests in Blunt's Creek. And also, as part of that, that we direct that the county manager and the chairman of the Board of Commissioners explore a possible alternative resolution, meeting with other officials, maybe in Craven County, to dispose of this water into a freshwater creek. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion?
I've got a question.
Sure.
Have you got a hydrology report from a certified engineer, hydrologist, or hydraulics competent person to support the claims that you have made?
What claim did I make that you think needs supporting?
I'm not asking that. That's not the question.
Well, that's what I'm asking you.
The question is, do you have a report from?
I don't need one.
You don't need one?
I don't believe so.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six one. Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome. I'd just like to say one thing, Hood. I respect the fact that you're walking to support what you believe in. I hope you respect the fact that I'm standing here speaking, supporting the cause that I believe in. Thank you.
I do those mine reports. I examined this report when it first came out. There is so much things that are simply not true. People are deluding themselves with this.
Just tell me one.
Everything I've heard is false.
Give me one.
Everything I've heard is false.
Everything's false. I heard that you said it wasn't a freshwater stream.
That's a freshwater stream at the head of it. You know that. Classified by the state.
Mr. Tolliver.
I'm here representing the Arts of the Pemblico, formerly the Beaufort County Arts Council. It's been a long time since I presented to this body, and I appreciate the opportunity today to kind of catch you up on what we've been up to recently and to also thank you for your continued support of the services that we do bring to Beaufort County. We are a 43-year-old organization. We bring arts programs not only to Washington but throughout the community, in the smaller communities all over Beaufort County. And we make it our mission to bring a good quality of life to not only just our downtown here in Washington but to all of Beaufort County. We have recently, I'm sure you know, purchased the Turnage Theater. In fact, it's about two years ago we made that purchase. We have been open to the public in the theater for about 14 months now. We opened in January of 2014. And in that time, we have had approximately 100 different events at the theater. Compared to when the Turnage Foundation had it open between 2007 and 2011, the last year they were open, they had less than 20. So we are trying our best, with all the resources we have and the experience we have, to have a very vital and well-regarded and successful business in downtown Washington that benefits not only downtown Washington but all of Beaufort County by having an economic impact on what goes on in our county. By our own conservative estimates, we've probably brought 20,000 people downtown in the last year and a half that would not have normally been there. And as commissioners, and you know all about economic development, I know you've all heard the terms multiplier effect and trickle-down economy, but these 20,000 people are making an impact on our county and our downtown by spending money at shops, at restaurants, by buying gas, by spending the night in our communities. They are certainly bringing money to Beaufort County that would not have been there. You might wonder how we are doing financially. We are doing very well, I'm proud to say. We came into the business of purchasing the Turnage with our eyes wide open. We studied what would happen for a year and a half before we decided to go forward with that decision. We came in with a three-year plan of what we needed to do to make the effort successful. We concentrated on a major gift campaign, appealing to individual donors as well as businesses and corporations with a goal of raising $750,000 over three years to help sustain us as we kind of learned our new role in the community. That was a very successful campaign on every measurement. Now we're looking at what can we do to sustain this. We have changed a lot about the Arts Council since it moved down from the depot. It's a completely different business than what we were just a short three years ago. We've increased our staff from equivalent two full-time positions. We now have equivalent five full-time positions. So we have been a job creator in that respect. The effect we've had on the downtown businesses, it's really hard to measure that, as you can imagine, but we have a lot of anecdotal evidence. Whenever we have events going on, the restaurants want to know so they can add extra staff. Downtown merchants want to know when we've got a big event going on or a Sunday event, for instance, they want to make sure they're open. They want to make sure they have enough salespeople on hand to handle the influx of people that come to downtown. The theater is used for not only our own presentations, but it's used by a lot of local arts organizations. It is rented by a lot of corporate organizations for corporate events. We've had everything in that theater from weddings to funerals, you name it. It's been there. We are trying to create a space in the community where everyone feels like they are welcome. Our programming covers the spectrum. It is ticketed. It is by donation only. A lot of it is free. We want everybody to feel like they are welcome, and they can be a part of that theater, no matter who they are, where they come from. Not a week goes by that the theater's not open to the public. We are open six days a week. We have a gallery. We have a gift shop. We are the home also of the Beaufort County Traditional Music Association. They're in there at least twice a week with their weekly jams, and that's open and free to the public. And they are, since they've moved there from the Interbanks Artisan Center, they've gone from having about 30, 40 people to over 100 each time they are playing there. And that happens every week. Since we moved to the theater, trying to be good stewards to the public and to make sure we make thoughtful and correct decisions and are very wise in what we do going forward, we have changed the complexion of our board. It used to be, for lack of a better word, the ladies at lunch. Now we have executives on our board. We have people on our board that bring specific talents to it, whether it's marketing, whether it's PR, whether it's finance, just good business acumen is who is leading us at this time. Last January, we had been in the theater for a year. We decided, okay, we've got a year under our belt. Let's look at what we've done, what has worked, what has not worked, what can we do better, what can we improve, what can we cut. We had a board retreat for two days. We brought in a facilitator from Duke who worked with us and helped us come up with an additional three-year plan. So now we have long-term planning for the next three years, up to 2018. We also had a public panel discussion. We invited the public to come in, tell us what they liked about what was going on, what they didn't like. We invited some of our peer organizations that were most like us to tell us what has worked for them, mistakes they had made, so we would not make those same mistakes. We are trying to be a good business and also serve the people of Beaufort County in a very smart and thoughtful way. We changed our name recently to Arts of the Pemblico because we are having much more regional impact than, and our audiences are coming from beyond Beaufort County. So in order to reflect that, we are now calling ourselves Arts of the Pemblico because we do serve the Pemblico region. We have our hands in programming from Ocracoke to Aurora. We are making investments in the theater that save us money. We have changed all of our house lights over to LED lighting, which is a significant savings, particularly in the long term. We have invested in a new communication system that helps us communicate with our patrons, our ticket buyers, our supporters, our members in a much more effective way so that not only can we communicate with them, but they can communicate with us. The tagline for our new name is connecting art, culture, and community. We believe that a strong arts community, or arts industry, if you will, can be just as effective as an industry that, like a factory. And that's proven and proven again in small communities and large communities across the country. And that's the Arts Council's role, and we appreciate you for appreciating what we do and for your support. And that's it for my presentation. If you have any questions.
You don't want to have anything for Mr. Tolliver? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is Philip Boyd.
Philip Boyd? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, first of all, I want to present to you a petition that's been signed for just a little less than 100 people to go before this calls. We're going to do a PowerPoint so most of the people here can go through this with us. Good afternoon. My name is Philip Boyd. This is my wife Valerie. We would like to thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns. Suburban Propane has requested permit to add two 30,000-gallon propane tanks to the existing 30,000-gallon facility located in our community on Highway 264 east of Washington. With this addition, the site capacity would be 90,000 gallons of liquid propane. We are here today to not ask for funding, but to ask for your help. First, we could ask that you consider the environmental hazards that's already existing in our community and issue a stop order for its expansion. Second, we ask that you consider measures that will eliminate the problem for our community in the future. Would you want this environmental hazard in your backyard? Consider the close proximity to buildings and homes. Suburban/Liberty Fence is approximately 32 feet from Thompson's filtration building. The fence to the right is approximately 80 feet from our home. The fence at the back of the property is approximately 40 feet from one of the Washington Water Pump Stations, which supplies water for the county. As you can see in this picture, smaller tanks are brought in and out frequently. As they are brought in, are they all emptied to prevent additional hazards or some of them stored with fuel still left into them? I've put together a little background information on this site property. The property was originally farmland that was sold to NC Natural Gas in 1992. It's one acre. It was obtained by Jenkins Gas and Oil Company, purchased the property in 2002. The current owner now, Liberty Propane Operations LLC, purchased the property in 2005. Liberty Propane Operations LLC operates a retail propane marketing company. They acquired and consolidate and operate retail propane distributors. Local companies linked to Liberty includes Suburban, FRA-More, Jenkins Gas, and my understanding is they're looking for more to add. Propane is a liquefied petroleum gas. It is normally a gas, but is a liquid when compressed in a propane tank. It is highly flammable. Propane has a National Fire Protection Agency fire hazard rating of four, which equals a supreme set, extreme, excuse me. Propane is heavier than air, so it does not dissipate in the atmosphere. When it leaks, it sinks to the ground level, pulls the air, and spreads. At some point, propane will encounter a source of ignition. Pound for pound, propane has 10 times greater energy content than TNT. That's an asset when heating your home in cold weather, but it's not good at all when you've got 90,000 gallons exploding near your home. A balling liquid expanding vapor explosion or blevy will occur when a propane tank is being heated, causing it to expand. If the pressure inside the tank grows to a level exceeding that at which the safety valve can expel it from the tank, the propane tank will erupt. If flames or a source of ignition is present, the propane will ignite, resulting in an explosion. Should a leak occur from the tank, one source of ignition is the LP tank evaporator that's located near the fuel point. The evaporator is a baller or heat source that does not build pressure. LP gas enters in the evaporator as a liquid and exits as a gas. Another source of ignition could be caused by a malfunction of the electrical components needed for pumping fuel in and out to the tanks. The most common source of ignition is human error. We've got a video that we're going to show you, but before we go there, I want to show you something that's on this picture that happened last week. If you'll look right there, we've got a 10,000-gallon tanker that just filled this tank up last Thursday. And the driver saw fit that the fuel level gauge, which is right there, is called a rotor gauge. He decided he was going to take it apart. So if you'll see, you'll see vapor coming out right there. Now, all that needs is an ignition point. By the truck still running, pumping, it's got it. It's just not enough volume there to get to it. We've got a short video that we want to show you of a blevy, but this is only going to be a 5,000-gallon, excuse me, a 500-gallon tank, which most of you may or may not have at your residence. We're going to get to 30,000 gallons in just a few minutes.
You want the blast one first? It says blevy on it. Yes.
This is less than two minutes. This is less than two minutes.
When a tank is exposed to sustained heat, such as from a fire, the liquid within the tank is forced to boil or vaporize, resulting in increased pressure in the tank. To prevent over-stressing the tank, the relief device activates, venting the excess pressure. As pressure decreases in the tank, the valve begins to close. With continued heating, pressure again builds, causing the relief valve to reopen. Where flames impinge on the tank below the liquid level, the liquid absorbs the heat, allowing the tank metal to remain at a safe temperature. With continued relief valve operation, the liquid level drops, exposing a greater area of the tank to the effects of heating. With the flames impinging on the vapor space of the tank, the temperature of the tank metal uncooled by liquid rises. At some point, due to the vapor pressure from within, the tank metal begins to weaken, stretch, and eventually tear. As the tank comes apart, large quantities of both liquid and vapor are released in a powerful explosion. The heat radiated is sufficient to ignite combustibles and cause burns great distances from the explosion. Tank sections containing rapidly igniting fuel can become flying missiles, traveling great distances, causing secondary fires and other damage. It all happens quickly, with little warning.
Keep in mind, that's only a 500 gallon, and a lot of people have this at their residence now. The only restriction is that they put it 30 feet from your building, it's up to you where you want it. They don't realize what the impact could be if it does explode. Now, an explosion at the proposed Suburban Tank Facility would have a blast radius of more than one mile for just 600 gallons, excuse me, 60,000 gallons of liquid propane explosions. This area includes Highway 264 from Zine Church to Midway, Harvey Road, Goose Creek Road, Camp Leach Road, and many other roads that's entied in within that circle. Keep in mind that this blast radius example is for 60,000 of a gas explosion. The blast radius for a 90,000 gallon explosion would be even larger. Keep in mind, we're still talking about 60,000. Damage expected for various distance, 1,500 feet, death or severe injury, severe or total destruction. At 2,200 feet, severe second to third, second and third degree burns within 60 seconds, moderate to severe damage. 3,500 feet, severe pain and burns within 60 seconds, moderate damage and broken windows. And then one mile evacuation. And again, Suburban is proposing a 90,000 gallon site capacity, likely increase the damages even more. The map represents the blast zone at this Highway 264 site. This is a roadmap. The blast zone radius will increase in distance with an increase in site capacity, but we're looking here at 60,000, not 90. Now, this site is a satellite site, same thing, we've just done it by looking down a punt stick. The propane company will probably use some of the items listed here to defend their proposed expansion. Propane is a safe fuel, but it is fire hazard rating of extreme. Advancement in engineering and safety requirements. But how old are these tanks that are being used? We know that the original tank was placed there in 1992. One of the tanks being installed is already on the location now, and it does not appear to be a new tank. Our proposed expansion has met all the state inspection requirements, but the state indicates that placement requires for this type of facility is to be decided by the local level. The propane company team of experts indicate that the facility is very safe, and there's almost no chance of anything going wrong. But, no one can guarantee that an explosion will not occur. These explosions do happen. They are usually caused by human error, and more likely during transfer of propane between truck and tanks. Human error cannot be predicted or controlled. Now, this is what we're going to show at 30,000, and it's less than two minutes also. Just bear with me, we'll get through this.
With no way to extinguish the blaze, concern grows that tank cars filled with liquid petroleum gas could erupt into blevies. Firefighters pull back and police evacuate a one-mile area surrounding the fire. But a TV news crew chooses to stay behind, just a half mile from the flames.
The fire is making a sound like a jetliner taking off. Something apparently blew up just a couple of minutes ago and started this big roar of flames and the sound of a jetliner.
What the news crew doesn't know is that the noise they're hearing is the warning of an impending blevy. Fuel discharged from a ruptured car has stoked the fire, and the flames are now heating another car carrying propane gas. Moments after the reporter signs off, 30,000 gallons of boiling propane push the tank's metal walls to the breaking point. The news crew feels the heat wave from the blast. Blevies from liquid petroleum gases like propane are much hotter than those from other fuels, making them extremely dangerous.
Bystanders or people within the vicinity up to 1,000 feet could suffer burns from the radiant heat from the fireball that's been released.
Liquid petroleum gas blevies also have tremendous force, which can turn exploding tanks into airborne missiles. The six-ton tank car in this blast rockets nearly three-quarters of a mile into a field.
At the Murdoch explosion, the propane car that blevy traveled 3,640 feet.
Shocked by the power of the blast, the news crew retreats two and a half miles from the derailment. As night falls, the flames finally make their way to a nearby tank car filled with highly flammable isolated tanks.
It goes on to just repeat some of the same things you've already heard. In additional concerns, Highway 264 is a major highway that extends to the beaches of North Carolina. It is a high-trafficed highway. It is also part of our disaster evacuation route. Increased truck traffic to include large tankers and smaller delivery trucks entering and exiting is onto a very busy highway. Tank burn-offs, increase in noise and propane smell, decrease in property value, difficulty in selling property near an environmental hazard. Our community includes two churches, several small businesses, a home daycare center, and many homes with families. Please help our community. Consider, would you want this much liquid propane in your community or and near your home? Consider the many possibilities of human error in a busy environment. Consider the possibilities of vehicle accidents involving the truck in traffic. Consider the dangers from lightning strikes, hurricanes, and tornadoes. Hunting with high-powered rifles could pose a danger as well. Consider, in this day and time, we must include the danger of criminal activity. Please consider that our county, yeah, let me rephrase that, does our county have all the needed resources in place to handle a disaster of this size and nature? For example, are there any fire hydrants in close enough proximity to provide enough water for a fire at the Suburban Propane Site? What about the medical emergencies that could be a result of this explosion? How can we just ignore the dangers of a facility like this in our residential area? Will you consider an ordinance that will protect our community and others like it in our county? We hope and pray that an explosion never occurs, but if it one does, it's too late to take action. The county would be left with a huge disaster, millions of dollars in property damage, and possibility of loss of life. This concludes our presentation, and again, we would like to thank you for your time and consideration. Open for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Boyd, very well done.
Thank you.
And I support your efforts.
And let me do emphasize this, if one does happen, it won't be us looking at you no more.
I understand that. The way I understand it, that the USDA does have total control over these situations. The only thing that we have is the inspection of electrical, is that correct, Brian?
That is correct.
Plan and Director and Fire Marshal can address that.
I can answer that very briefly, yes. We, the Plan Department does issue a building permit for the electrical. We received our letter from the USDA that there's approved, so we can move forward with that pending this plan's being submitted for our inspector to look at. And the USDA does require that the tanks be 50 feet from the property line, that's just out of our regulation.
The only time I would get involved in this, if there was an accidental release or something, then of course we would go in and summarize what was going on, and make a decision on how we'd act with it. The only thing that Mr. Boyd didn't add to this, I think I should, is each liquid gallon turns into a vapor of 270 gallons that's flammable per gallon, so that's something you need to consider.
Thank you, sir. In addition to your packet, you have some existing and proposed that I draw. I went out there with a wheel myself and give you some accurate figures. I think that the drawing plans that's been submitted to the county is a little off, but mine, I can pretty much guarantee you are on the money. And you have that in your packet.
I've got two more questions.
Yes, sir.
You said that site started as an acre, is that correct?
One acre is what the site is, and it was farmland before, and that tank appeared without any explanation, it was just about overnight, no questions to us whatsoever, it just come there.
Is that site still an acre?
Yes, sir, it's a little over an acre.
And who sold that land to the gas company to begin with?
It was purchased through Tankard Farms LLC. It belonged to an individual that had owned it for many years, but Tankard Farm ended up purchasing it. What year was that?
1992.
92. And then he split it up to develop it, and he sold all within residential areas except for those three properties that I mentioned a while ago, Thompson Filtration, and then the gas tank facility, and behind it is Washington City, which are pumping stations.
Can you buy a guy anything else?
I have a couple of questions if I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a hunting club in that area?
Yes, sir, it's right behind the site, it's Goose Creek Hunting Club.
How many acres is that?
High-powered rifles.
High-powered rifles?
Yes.
They can use in there? And looking on the internet, I came across something from the insurance company, I think it's from an insurance company, Form 8.3, and it tells me, if I'm reading it right, that you have to have a certain water flow rate if there's a fire there?
Correct.
And if I figure it out, so I have 603 gallons per minute for three units?
Absolute.
And is, does that cause an issue?
I spoke with the manager of the company today, and he is willing to put a fire hydrant on location if necessary, and we do have the capacity to flow that. The problem is, the problem with that is, is that DOT guidelines, the emergency guidebook, says when you've got a bulk storage tank like that, to use unmanned monitors. So basically what we do is send a master stream up on it, use, put a fire truck there and leave it. Because basically we'd be sacrificing the fire truck trying to save the hundreds.
And the, or save the people.
Hopefully the people's out by then.
Yeah, there's evacuation plans.
What's left?
I assume we have evacuation plans set up.
Yes, sir.
And now, if you put in a hydrant, will that water main there be able to sustain a hydrant at that rate of water?
Yes, sir. We can sustain, sustain one for several days if we have to, and it could take there, because when it goes through a chain reaction, it could go from one tank to the next, it's keep on being a problem. So it could stretch out a long time.
May I, Mr. Chairman, one more question. Seth, could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm only talking now about distribution centers, I'm not talking about farmers with their propane tanks or residents with their propane tanks, but from a distribution perspective, are there any counties in eastern part of Carolina that have ordinances or anything that address this issue?
There are, I'm not aware of any. I'll try to come back with you guys at a future time with that, do some research.
All right. Thank you.
Most of the counties don't have any sort of county laws on that.
I know that. Thank you, Mr. Boyd, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Let me add one more thing.
Oh, you've got something, go ahead, Robert.
I have a couple of questions. You mentioned Thompson Filtration, how close are they to this?
Thirty-one and a half feet.
What is the, you said your house is close by, and I assume Paige is sitting here, I assume your house is close. How far are y'all's house from this acre line?
I'm only eighty feet.
Eighty feet. And Paige, how about you?
She's approximately, I would say, within two tenths of a mile.
Two tenths of a mile.
What I was getting ready to say to you, being you touched base on the insurance, and this is a piano works that could be opened, this could extrude my homeowner's policy if they knew that the dangers that it occurred, we haven't gotten there yet, but it's a possibility that I could see insurance people getting involved and not insuring residents.
Is that it, Robert?
Yeah, that's, I just want to know how close they were actually. How about daycare centers and churches?
Daycare, daycare's within a quarter of a mile, both ways.
One daycare.
It's only one daycare, correct.
Mr. Ward. Ask a question for me.
I'm not sure that you can answer this question, Seth or Brian maybe would answer. Does NCDA require any kind of public hearing when they expand an operation like this?
Seth?
No, sir, I mean, we have not been made aware of any, there was never such requirement, and we've already gotten approval, so.
So they've already gotten the approval?
Yes, sir. It's pending now, does the building permit?
But it's still not too late to voice a concern, I don't guess, is it? Have you written anything to NCDA in opposition to it?
Who's monitoring this, all these facilities, is the Department of Agriculture. And I've talked to Mr. Steve Troxler and three more of his constituents that's underneath him, and he says that the site, it does meet compliance, and that's all they're concerned about, is compliance. They don't, they're not involved in the aftermath. He says it's up to the local to make jurisdiction on how they see fit, but it does stand in compliance.
But the one tank has been in existence since 1992?
Yes, sir.
And we've not had any problems?
Well, hopefully we won't ever have a problem. And what we're shooting for is, I feel sure that that one tank would have to be grandfathered in, but any additional is that much more problematic for us, and that's what we're here for tonight.
Right.
Is to keep from add-ons, and also in the future, that when these facilities are coming up within the county, they need to be in an isolated area, and not during, not surrounded by residential components.
And I would like to say that with the addition, excuse me, with the addition of the two tanks, we expect an increased activity. With increased activity, you have increased chance of error, human error.
Human error.
And we're looking for, it's already increased in activity. It's already increased in activity. There's more smells, you know? We can see them burning off tanks from time to time. You know, people go by and say, gosh, what's burning at your house? You know? And it's the large flames up in the air where they burn these things off. So fire is there, you know? And we're depending or hoping that no one ever makes a mistake, you know? Because if they do, then you've got three tanks that will be five feet away from each other, linked together.
With one pumping station. So that puts them all tied together. If electrical malfunction does occur, it can set off all three. It's just like the picture that I showed with that one individual that had an issue about the field gauge. Well, he so choose to go in there and work on it himself, and it was extruding some vapor. And vapor is where the problem is at.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hood, you've got something?
Oh, yeah. The market-based agriculture... I have the right thing in front of me, but it's market-based... Market-based agriculture lease. This is coming back all of a sudden. It's come back from Soil Conservation Services. And people remember, the commissioners, we had this about two years ago. This is another way that the federal government has devised to try to get control of airspace by setting a value on the airspace. And what it worked then, I can't get the modern information to see how it has been changed, but at that time, farmers, property owners would bid, and it's a low bid thing. This thing's really put together real well. The low bids for leasing airspace down to 100 feet and development rights on property, the government would pay them so much a year for 10 years. But we read those lease agreements, and the lease agreements provide that the U.S. Navy can enforce those lease agreements. And if you recall, it was the U.S. Navy that was trying to do the OLF here. This is a sneaky way of getting control of property. And once the rate has been set, once the lease rate has been set, the federal government can take that lease rate and go wherever they want to at that point, because the rate has been set. Hey, this is what you get. We're taking your rights down to within 100 feet of the ground. This can involve grain elevators. You can't have any lights that if they take this, they go upward, et cetera, et cetera. And the government claims that they're only wanting... At that time, they only wanted some flyways that were a mile wide. But what the public needs to know is, the commissioners voted not to support this and not to become a part of this program. So I hope that if we have staff, I would like to know... Don't tell me right now. If we have staff that's been going to these meetings and supporting this, because the commissioners have voted not to support it, because it's a property rights issue. And it's a sneaky way of getting control of flyways in eastern North Carolina. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. I saw, or Brian, had been some meetings on this. Nobody has talked to me about it. I know probably more about it than anybody else. We do not need to be supporting this effort.
I'll address that. I have not been to any meetings, Commissioner Richardson. I got the minutes from the Soil and Water Board.
Is that where it came from?
Meeting, and I sent it to y'all to have. And you called me and said, will you give me additional information on this?
Right.
And no property owners in Beaufort County have yet signed on to it.
Right. And they should not sign. If they were opposed to the OLF, they should definitely not be signing this, because this is the way the government is going to get control of your land, and not just your land. They're going to get control of your neighbor's land. This is all done under the famous memorandum of understanding between the Department of Defense and the Department of Agriculture, where the Department of Defense provides the money, and Department of Agriculture is the front man. And they're doing this through the Soil Conservation Service, and it looks very innocent, but it's a fraudulent sham when it comes to property rights. So, you know, we would... The county did not get into this, because once you get into it and they get control of those flyways, you're going to see a whole lot of other things happening to you. I would say in fairness that in the past, the county said, we support the military. We want the military to train. We want the military to practice. We don't have anti-aircraft guns. They can fly over the county if they want to. That's fine. We don't have any of those kinds of complaints. But we don't need to be giving up property rights to the federal government and the U.S. Navy under this sham system that they have devised. And the reason I was asking for copies of those contracts, and I still want them, is they have probably reworked this program, because once people caught on to what was going on, a lot of people in counties would not get involved in it.
In the email, you have a copy of the contract you drafted?
Yeah. I haven't had... I'm walking, so I haven't had time to pull it up. Yes, you do have that, do you?
And there's a webpage that's dedicated to it that has all the information?
Well, all the information... What they did before, when we went after them before, was they pulled the really bad information off of the website and pretended that it had never existed. But we already had copies of those contracts, so we knew what they were trying to do to people. And this thing ran all the way from Lejeune to Raleigh, across several other counties in eastern North Carolina. So it includes every county in northeastern North Carolina, and several county commissions signed on to this thing and didn't even know what it was. But it's a return of the OLF.
Mr. Chairman, just to address, the next meeting of the Soil and Water Board is September 21st at 7:00. And Ann Williams and I have had that conversation, and she said they would be glad to discuss that again, to discuss that piece if anybody wants to go. And I was scheduled to be at that meeting anyway, just to meet everybody.
If you would send me an email, I'll try to go to that, because I went to the last ones that we had on this.
I got first. I remember when we heard, I remember when we made this statement about it. But my question to you, if a person... I mean, we oppose it. If a person, a farmer, a landowner, or want to sign on, what is the county's alternative?
Well, here's the locks that are on this. In order to make this work, the county commissioners will have to agree to go into the program, because the money is paid to the property owner through the local Soil Conservation Service. And that's how we've got control of this. And as long as the county commissioners never approve to get into the program, so that we're making the payments on this, then it won't happen. And we really... My opinion is, don't do this, because this is a tremendous grab on property rights. And people think they're getting a little bit of money, because you have to put your property up under the old system and bid, and they would pay the low bids, and then they would pay everybody the lowest bid. Gee, does this sound fair and right? They're taking big-time advantage of property owners with this, with what they have devised. It's an ingenious thing that they've devised.
All the time, we need to do is just let the public know what's going on.
Just let the public know that we're not getting into the program, because we were interested in protecting their property rights.
I got you.
What day did you say that Soil and Water meeting was? September 21st at 7:00.
I know this came up last time when we voted it down, when we were... The windmills, the turbines, we were talking about those. And if this program were to go into existence, they would control airspace below 500 feet.
That's correct.
And the turbines, right now, according, if I'm correct, the military controls down to 500 feet.
Right.
And the turbines are at 400 and some feet, and they would be okay. But if this were to take place in Beaufort County, and they control down to 100 feet, we'd forget we're putting up a wind turbine or any structure over 100 feet in Beaufort County that the military could tell you, nah, you can't do that, because we control that space above 100 feet. And we voted, I think, I believe, almost believe.
It also include green elevators and stuff like that.
There's those trains elevators and anything that's above that. And, you know, I'd like to point out what other thing that we have... It's been a while since we got into. We did a joint agreement that involved Wayne County, Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, flight paths across the county down to 500 feet for a corridor that is defined. And we did that with the... Negotiated with the Pentagon and North Carolina Deaner. I sat in on all of those, and we came to terms with them. And then, once we came to terms with them, Wayne County did not honor the agreement. They'd hired lawyers. They were going to sue us and all this sort of stuff. And Wayne County did not hold up their part of that bargain, because when the company got ready to build the windmills in the county, Wayne County, through the Utilities Commission, filed a lawsuit. And I don't know the status of that, because I can't find out anything, other than they did a good job of costing our farmers a lot of money.
Mr. Chairman, and I don't know, is Martin here? Yeah. I went to the economic development meeting, and according to Martin, the wind turbine people have all of their permits. They're just looking for somebody to buy the energy that they... They can't find anybody to buy the energy. If they can find somebody to buy it, I think they could build the turbine. Am I wrong or right, Martin?
No, that is what they're telling me, yes. And interestingly, I don't know if you followed the Amazon case, where they sold the energy out of state and therefore avoiding North Carolina law. And that may be a similar situation here. If they can find a purchaser of the power, then they hope to go ahead.
For those of you who aren't aware, in North Carolina, if you produce energy off the grid, you're only allowed to sell it to a utility. You can't sell it to an individual or a company. I can't go out and... I can't put up a solar farm and sell pronamics that electricity. It's against the law in North Carolina. It's not against the law in every state. So the folks in Virginia, Amazon, bought the electricity that was being produced by wind turbines in Elizabeth City and are sending that power to Ohio to power one of their plants. So they were... Elizabeth City was able to avoid North Carolina law by selling their energy out of state. Now, I don't know that how much our law makes sense. I don't see why if somebody wants to produce energy, they can't sell it to or they want to, but it's just not the way it is in North Carolina.
And that's fine with me if they want to sell it out of state. We just want the money. You know, our farmers, our landowners, they, you know, if you can do a deal, they deserve the money.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Back off our break right now. Commissioner Buzz, you have one question for Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah. No, not for Mr. Richardson, for you and the county manager. Brian, I read the material you sent about the conservation initiative. And, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to suggest is that we invite somebody from this organization to come up here before the board and give us a briefing, because as I read this, it talks about a number of things. Promoting profitable and sustainable family farms, natural resource, support the military. And I'd like to hear somebody from the organization go into more detail on it. So that's what I'd like to request.
Can you set that up?
We can do that at the next meeting. We ask them to come, and then also, they're available on 21st.
Providing I get to answer, ask my number of questions that I need to ask, because the whole program is a sham. You don't need to waste your time on it.
Okay. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here tonight to update you on behalf of the water project and to ask your approval of the next step towards closing out the project. Project, in summary, is funded by two Public Water Supply Loan Grant Programs. One is with Beaufort County District 1. The other ones were Beaufort County District 6. Project was seven miles of 12-inch water line and one booster pump station. Purpose of the project was to switch water supplies for Beaufort County Water District 1, which is north of the river, switch it from the Washington Water Treatment Plant, which supplies the water there before this project, to the South Side Water Treatment Plant, which is operated by the county. Project was funded by Public Water Supply Loan and Grants, with the majority of the funding being granted. The specific route of the project, it started out at the intersection of 33 and Old Blunt Creek's Road, came up Pagan Lane, went over to 17, then got on the old railroad bed, which has been abandoned, to the river, crossed under the river to a booster pump station located at the corner of Plymouth and Second Street, and then out to Grimes, and then over to 264 to Page Road. And that, again, allows us to pump the water from the south side to the north side. Contractors were... Contract 1 was here in Ravenbach. That was contracted under Beaufort County 6. They basically completed their work. They completed it last year. There's still some amount of cleanup remaining and final inspection, but it took completion of both projects before you could activate the line. Contract 10, which was contracted under Beaufort County Water District 1, still has some major cleanup remaining. They have a sewer force main that has to be relocated, have some paving and final inspection. Project is operational at this time. It's currently being used to pump water from District 6 up to District 1. The booster pump station is being operated by county personnel. We are under a provisional trial status operation at present time up until October 1st. If everything goes well up until October 1st, we would allow the project substantially complete retroactive back to September 2nd. Substantial completion means that you have beneficial use of the system. Project is within budget, and I've reviewed the proposed actions tonight with the Water Committee, and we are here to ask your approval for a change order and associated project budget ordinance amendment in order to allow us to pay the contractors, or pay one of the contractors. We need to... We need the change order to bring the contracted values into balance with the actual values that were placed in the field. And contract number 10 is past its project completion date and is subject by contract to liquidated damages. So I am at a point where I cannot pay the contractor any more money until I have a change order, which would then allow me to pay him additional dollars. Change orders will grant a time extension, which would relieve him from a certain amount There'll be one more final adjusting change order that I hope to come back to you within the next 60 to 90 days to close out the project. The values that you have in your budgets that you have before you tonight are close to being the final numbers. Just in summary, Contract 1, I have change order number 3. It's coming before you. I'll take you over to that in just a moment, but it's a negative... It's a deduct change order with a zero-day extension. That's the contract that was completed last October, and there are no liquidated damages associated with it. The other contract is Contract 10, change order 5. It's also a decrease in change order value, but it adds 85 days of time extension. But it does have factored into it 50 days of liquidated damages at $2,500 a day, or $125,000. The closeout is consistent with my presentation back to you last January or March. And at this time, I would ask you maybe to go over to page 200 in your agenda, and that is the change order associated with Contract 1. That's the contract that finished last October. It's simply a negative change order, $4,6,000 to bring the actual contractual values into balance with what was done in the field, and it has no time extension. And the negative number comes as a result of just unit price adjustments. Going with that, if you turn to page 195, is a resolution. This resolution adopts a capital project budget ordinance and authorizes the execution of the change order number 3, which we just looked at. And I'd be glad to ask any questions about that. I'd be glad to go ahead and show you the next change order and the other resolution for the other district. If you want to do them all at one time, or if you want to do them individually, it would be appropriate now for you to consider this one.
It's a pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
About Pagan Lane.
Okay. Okay, I'll be glad to answer.
If I could consciously consider what you're proposing here, I need some answers. A couple of weeks ago, I was down at Pogal Lane talking to the residents down there, and there was a lot of issues associated with the drainage. The drainage ditch was clogged with soil from runoff, and so were the drainage pipes. And I saw the patchwork that was done on their driveways. I see now that some of the work's been taken care of, but I need some assurances for those residents, that their patchwork is going to be redone to look like a professional job. And the, any of the drains that are under the driveways that are clogged are going to be declogged, so that the water flows, and we don't have any puddles sitting there. So, I need some assurances on that. And I have this appropriate time to ask those questions, but I need to have those answers before I consider what I'm going to do.
I think that that work was, that you're referring to, was done by Contract 10, which still has a substantial amount of cleanup left to do. We're holding right now 18% of their contract value. And I assure you that all of those issues will be resolved to the satisfaction of myself and to the property owners prior to final payment being made to the contract.
So, Mr. Lewis, what you're telling me now, in public, is that you'll be satisfied, we'll be satisfied, and the residents will be satisfied? Or I should put the residents be satisfied first, and yourself and us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to--
What kind of timeframe is that going to be taking care of?
The contractor's very anxious to get his money. He's promised to come in, but he's also financially strapped with his ability to put his resources out. They have to do everything, so.
Same contract you told us a couple of months ago that was delayed in the job because he didn't put sufficient resources into this project?
Yes, sir. And I think, I think it was pave, there was paving scheduled today on two of the driveway, or one driveway, and there was a, the contract had satisfied the owner for the second driveway in a financial--
Well, there's a number of driveways that I saw even today. One of them looks like a jigsaw puzzle, and where you had machines running over the nether part of the driveway wasn't fixed at all. So, there is issues there. You know that.
Yes.
There's issues with the drainage and issues with the driveways.
And there are two projects going on on Pogal Lane. I think a sewer project by Chalk Winity on one side.
I'm only talking about the side, I'm not talking about the Chalk Winity side. I'm talking about the side where the bank is and the car wash is. Now, a lot of work's been done on the bank property and on the car wash.
This would be--
I think the soil's been looked at, because the first soil the contractor put down was loaded with glass, bricks, stone. It was very unsightly. So, they came in, they redid that. But this, I'm still concerned about the drainage. I'm still concerned about the driveways.
Our project is on the Chalk Winity side of Pogal Lane.
What a side is, I always talk to the mayor and I talk to the engineer. It's on the, your project is on the, on the, the bank and the car wash side.
Yes.
That's what he said.
But you just told us now that the contractors have financial problems. So, is the 18% that you're holding back going to cover this work that may have to be done?
Absolutely.
And, and the chairman asked you what the timeline we're looking at for the residents?
Timeline is out of my control. He wants his money. He's very anxious to, if I can get him lined up to get him some money, he says he'll get through with it very quickly. We've reached an agreement with him regarding the liquidated damages and et cetera, and we see our way through getting through the project, bringing the project in within budget.
Mr. Lewis, I have another question for you. If you give him money, are you still going to have money holding back in case he doesn't do it correctly?
Absolutely. Sufficient money.
To cover in case you have to bring another contractor in?
Absolutely.
How much is 18% paying? Rough figures, I mean, did you hold?
We can fix a few driveways.
Drainage also.
You can come and fix mine.
Yes.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board on this resolution? Do we want to hear all of them and, and do it all at one time, or do we want to do them one by one?
Just be two actions.
Be two. What's the pleasure of the board?
It'll make a lot of difference.
Let's hear the other one. We'll do it all at one time.
All right. If you go to page 149, you'll find the other change order. This is a change order with the contractor that we've just talked about. There were a lot of obstacles or challenges with his, with the work that went, that he contracted to do. And he worked on it very willingly and very cooperatively. We ran into some issues that I think would be appropriate and fair to pay him for, and, and a lot of issues that he raised that we did not feel were justified. This change order on at page 149 is a listing of the adds and deducts. The overall net deduct is a $66,000 deduct on behalf of the project. Some of the major concerns, we had a, we hit a dump site, and it resulted in contaminated soil that really needed to be removed and taken to a state-approved landfill, which was in Bertie County. There was a, the gas lines under 264 that we had to go across were, no one knew the depth that they were at. And we had to locate, we had to define that depth before we could do bores across the highway. In one bore across the highway, we disturbed a abandoned water line that led to highway failure. And we had to, and that was close to Lively Road. We had to do an appreciable amount of work to include pumping of grouting field under the highway to restore or protect the highway. And so, that's just some of the things. I'd be glad to answer any questions about that. And if you want to go over to page 144, this is the resolution for the project budget ordinance that addresses these things. Again, I'd like to point out, I assured you I would do everything in my power to bring this project within the budget. Project will be in budget. Project's in budget now. I have the assurances and agreements from all parties that we are in order. I'm just waiting for some final numbers from attorneys. Got another easement that needs to be, two, I've got six more easements that need to be worked out in order to take care of a two-inch force main that's already incorporated into these numbers. So, project was a very complicated project in that it crossed 17 three times. It, it crossed a railroad once. It had to cross the river. Had 30 or more easements involved. We had to work with three different units of government, Chalk Winity, DOT, and City of Washington. And we've worked hard to satisfy all of them. And we had to go two miles down 264 with a 12-foot corridor that contained water, gas, storm sewer, and sanitary sewer, and we had to maintain the separations to, that are required or prescribed by the permitting agencies. So, I think the job has been done well. I think it's in a, I think it's a real asset to the county, and be glad to answer any questions if--
Okay. Anybody have anything from Mr. Lewis?
Hey, I have another question.
Go ahead.
Mr. County Manager, the holder of the contract is McDavis, correct, Mr. Lewis?
No.
The owner of the contract, who holds the contract?
Which contract?
The one on the laying of the water pipes.
I mean, there's several--
The answer.
Multiple contracts.
Multiple contracts.
May I answer it, sir?
He can answer that question.
Okay.
The contract is between the water district and the contractor. I am the engineer that administers the contract for you.
Well, I guess my question is then, Mr. Lewis, if, I guess, when you mentioned that the subcontractors having some financial problems, if he does sloppy work and we run, and you run out of money that you owe him, who, what's the next level of responsibility?
It's fully bonded by insurance policy.
So, the residents then, as you assured us before, I just want you to hear it again, that that work will be taken care of to the satisfaction of those residents, this board, and yourself, and our engineer?
Provided that we were responsible for the problems. We cannot be responsible for problems we didn't have anything to do.
I fully understand that.
Yes. But yes, sir, to answer you.
Because everything looked at, you basically--
We have not, we've not even given out a punch list on the project. It's just obvious what they had to do to, at this point, to get to, to a place where we will build a punch list. All of the residents along the routes will be satisfied. We'll make every attempt to do so. And I assure you--
As you know, they did it one time. They went in and put concrete down where it's concrete. They went down, put blacktop where blacktop was. They left a lot of other issues. Now, they've gone in and done some work, but a lot of concrete work and blacktop has not been done. I'm just very concerned for those residents.
Yeah. As they do that, my job is to determine whether the work they've done is acceptable or not acceptable. I cannot really control their methods and all, but, but much of the work they've done, they've had to do two times or three times to get it--
So, it, what you're telling me then, what I just heard now, is it has to be acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Langley?
And I just want to say this with all sincerity, regardless of what Van said. When, when I really wanted to know where the rubber hits the road, I asked our employee, Ms. Smith. She's done that type of work. She knows how things are supposed to be. So, and if she says everything is fine and everything's going to be all right, I completely trust her. Because she has been in this field, she's done this work, and she understands it.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, board, thank you. I hope to be back one more time to close this project out.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Bussey, I'll have those assurance.
Excuse me, sir?
I will have those assurance. I will give you those assurance.
And I know you did, and I trust you. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Commissioner Richardson.
Well, this is, this is a resolution to support the rural hospital bill that's in front of Congress, which, which allows, makes a big change in how rural hospitals can operate. It doesn't require them to operate in a particular way, but it says that they can go back to having, being an emergency room, and they do not have to provide acute care is basically, basically what it says. And for some of these hospitals, that can be a really big deal in the way that they go about running their business, especially in remote areas where, where the service is limited. So, this, this is a resolution asking our board to support and send a resolution to our senators and house, federal senators and house members supporting the rural hospital bill.
Is this the same resolution that Washington County sent to us that they approved?
Probably is, because--
I think it is the same one.
A lot of counties are, are supporting this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm due that we approve this resolution.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Have a sec, a motion and a second. Any more further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? 7-0. Seth?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members. My first item for y'all tonight is petition to name a road. I referred your packets there. We've got a completed petition submitted by Ms. Roxanna Better to name an existing unpaved private road off Cotton Patch Road adjacent to the Blunts Creek, located in Chalk Winity Township. You look at your area map there. You're probably familiar with this area. Cotton Patch Road leading down to Cotton Patch Landing. Starting to see a significant amount of homes on that dirt road back, going down back to the terminus of the creek. They submitted three proposed names, Cotton Patch Lane, Nature's Way Road, and Nature's Way Lane. They determined that any additional road names beginning with Cotton Patch would create an exact duplicate, which obviously is a great concern to emergency responders. We have no existing road names beginning with Nature's Way, and we don't have any sound alikes. For this reason, staff's recommendation would be to approve the applicant's proposed second choice of Nature's Way Road.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion in it, and do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? 7-0. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you. Just a second here. We'll get the PowerPoint pulled up. Okay, our next item for y'all is the proposed donation of land to Beaufort County Government. It's a proposed 32.27 acre site located in Bell Haven. See the area map here? Probably is located adjacent to Highway 99 and Main Street of 264, right in town. You know, this property has extensive frontage along Pantigo Creek. We've got four total parcels that make up this total acreage of 32.27 acres. Two of those parcels, the majority of which are owned by Front Porch Acquisition, a family out of Greenville. Smaller 0.5 acre tract are owned by Mr. Beasley, which is under Greenwood Acres LLC. Look at our total value here, it's a little over $2 million. So, county staff met with representatives of Front Porch Acquisitions back in February, and then later were contacted by representative of Greenwood Acres. Both ownerships were proposing, donating these properties to Beaufort County. County staff and, and town of Bell Haven staff have discussed some type of a possible partnership in accepting this combined acreage. Town of Bell Haven is very excited about this opportunity, not only for economic development, but also as a possibility of increasing public water access, potentially putting in boardwalks all along the extensive frontage of wetlands there. That could provide fishing or sightseeing, exercise opportunities, et cetera. The county partnered with ECS Consulting, folks that came from Wilmington to be with us tonight, and of course, also Mides Committee. Our commission's been helping us extensively, conducted environmental review. ECS believes that this site is a strong candidate for the North County Department of Environment, Natural Resources Brownfields Program. This is a program that provides environmental liability protection for any property owners or developers of the site. And through that program, the county will be protected from liability should the board decide to move forward with any type of a project. In the process there, we'd submit an application to the program, and if we received a letter of eligibility, that's a very strong indicator of being accepted into the program. Staff would feel confident that that would be a good indicator to move forward. Staff has also been in negotiations or discussions, at least with NC Wildlife, are very interested in adding another public voting access point on this site as well.
Is that, are they going to have grant money to take care of that?
Wildlife takes care of all their improvements on their own. So, they would have, enter into another memorandum of agreement similar to the Wright's Creek or Blunts Creek properties. I'll turn it over to Martin Johnson here for a little economic development.
That's it. I guess I'll use a well-worn term in my trade is location, location, location. This is an excellent location for the things that Seth has talked about. And also, currently, I'm talking with three businesses that are interested in potentially putting a location on this site. One of them is a sailing company, or produces sailboats. Reason that this is so good, there are no bridges between here and the Oregon inlet. It's only 55 miles. And, so they're very excited about the possibility of not only using it as a manufacturing site, but also as a site where they could bring people to cruise on their boats to increase their marketing capabilities. Also, as Seth said, North Carolina Wildlife is very interested in the site. And in fact, talking with all three businesses, they would be very interested in that as well, because, again, it brings customers to purchase boats and what have you. As you can see, the site is very close to Bell Haven as well. And obviously, people utilizing this site would go down to Bell Haven for accommodation in the B&amp;Bs, restaurants, and potentially other spinoff, spinoff businesses. So, I think it's an excellent location. So, just to summarize, you know, economic reasons would be job creation in terms of both any manufacturers that may go on the site, also jobs from construction, also jobs that may be created in Bell Haven from spinoff, sorry, from multiplier effects. The private investment in the site would obviously increase the tax base. As I said, multiplier effects, it would increase tourism. There is actually a lack of boat ramps in this, this area. Most of the boat ramps tend to be more towards Washington on the other side of the river. They, currently, there's been a lot of uses for this in history, economic uses, but right now, it's not being used-- but right now it's not being used for any economic purpose that I know of. And also by creating this, we would create new users for that space that would kind of spur the confidence in the economy. And one element in all economic forecasts is expectations. So I think if, you know, you show movement forward, I think people become encouraged to make investments of their own. Thank you.
Okay. I got a question. Over on page 216, where it says projected costs for the county, those figures that you've got there add up to 38,533 dollars and 30 cents, and you've got 56,423 dollars and 30 cents as a total. Can you explain that?
Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, we just noticed that here earlier this evening. There were some previous figures we had looked at that, when those were removed, I didn't adjust the total. The total is just...
It's just a typo then?
It's a typo, yes, sir. It's approximately $40,000.
And also the tax on a piece of property that the counties would have to pay. 20,533 dollars and 30 cents is the current tax on that.
For the cooperage tracks, yes, sir.
Well, that's for Beaufort County.
That's right.
Do we have to pay the tax?
Their ownership, the owners are requesting that.
But are we, is that in the Bell Haven city limits?
It is, but that, yes, the county taxes.
Taxes has got to be paid to Bell Haven, too. Does that figure include Beaufort County and Bell Haven taxes? I think Bell Haven is like 50 cent on a dollar, 50 cent on a hundred dollars.
It's what, $20,000?
It includes both.
It includes both.
Because about a dollar per hundred and $200 would be $20,000.
Okay, that's all I got. What's the pleasure of the board? Anybody got anything for...
Can we meet the deadline of the property owner of trying to do it by December the 31st? Is that by putting it into the brand field?
My understanding is that would take about a month.
If you, yes, our understanding is that if we went ahead and submitted an application for the Brownfields program, that we can get the letter of eligibility. It's usually within about a month. So our staff's recommendation would be if we get that, then direct staff to move forward with accepting the property.
Brian, do you have anything?
It is our belief that we can. We've had those conversations both with ECS and with the COG and their conversations with the Brownfield folks. We believe we can do that. That's why we've asked in the agenda item that we move forward with the Brownfields agreement. If we're able to receive that letter of eligibility, that we go ahead and move forward with accepting the property and starting that process so they're able to close it out before the end of the year.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
When I first heard of this, I said, oh my God, we're getting in another VOA site. But with what he said and about the possibility of jobs occurring there, and what Ricky said earlier tonight about the decrease in population and the need for economic activity in Bell Haven, I've changed my mind. I think that we should try in any way possible to help Bell Haven with economic development.
Great. We could use the 55 jobs from the hospital.
This may, I'm speaking now, Mr. Richardson, I think.
Yeah, but I spoke too.
Out of order.
Yes, I was out of order, but it was necessary.
And you're still out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're quite welcome. Go ahead, Mr. Bell.
Anyway, with the economic development that this might bring, I'm willing to take that risk and make the motion that we accept this property with one provision, and that is that we get the, that we receive the letter of eligibility from the Brownfield, because I don't want to be liable for anything that's underneath that property that from things that have been there in the past.
I'll second.
About a second. Go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner, that's why we put the motion in the way we did. And also, what we tried to do, we were very cognizant of the fact that you mentioned about the VOA site, and what we tried to do was make sure that we provided a realistic estimate of what your exposure may be in this property, and that's where you'll see the numbers that roll up to about $40,000. And of that, $20,000 is taxes which will come in and go back out, because what you do, you buy the property, and they turn around and pay the taxes on it. So it's going to roll. So we believe that that's an estimate that you'll be okay on your exposure. We want to make sure you had that so there weren't any unknowns out there.
But the application that we're working on is to put both parcels.
As an entire track, yes.
As an entire track.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have one thing.
Okay.
The, we don't have to include this as part of this motion, but just as a reminder, we need to leave that 30-foot water and sewer easement that's running parallel to the railroad track. To be granted to the town of Bell Haven needs to be in this deal.
Okay. No further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Seven zero. Thank you very much. Seth?
Okay, coming before you tonight for the second phase of the Wright's Creek Public Beach and Coastal Waterfront Access Program. See the Wright's Creek site here in the eastern boundary of the county. Let's give it a little background. Project site is located at the Terminus of Wilkins Road, which is accessed off of Pamlico Beach Road. Total project area is two parcels, just shy of 10 acres. Phase one, which the county's already purchased and things are moving forward there, is 3.12 acres. Phase two, the focus of tonight, is just under seven acres. Commissioners directed staff to move forward with the multi-phase Wright's Creek Water Access Project back in 2013. This is a continued commitment to provide free public access to our pristine waterways. This multi-phase plan to utilize grant funds to offset costs of purchasing two adjacent parcels encompassing the existing canal and boat ramp that was the former Buddy Seafood commercial business. Phase one included the parcel adjacent to Wilkins Road, which will house the renovated boat ramps, parking areas, docks, et cetera. Phase two will include a larger adjacent parcel directly to the south that would facilitate overflow parking and shore fishing in the short term, and the addition of a fishing pier, small boat ramp, kayak launch at future phases. As I said with the previous application or the previous item, providing pedestrian fishing access is an important element of this project as well, as the public fishing piers and boardwalks are even more limited in Beaufort County than boat landings. So here we've got the phase one property that we described above. We've entered into a memorandum of agreement with Wildlife, and they're moving forward with the permitting there. Phase two, see here below, a larger track and surprisingly high ground, elevation right in the center of this is 6.8 feet, plus or minus three or four inches, and the BFE over there is six foot. So again, spring of 2003, the board directed staff to move forward with this multi-phase project. Fall of 2013, Mideast submitted the Kama Public Beach Access and Coastal Waterfront Access Program grant, the pre-grant, pre-application, and final application for phase one. That application was successful, and the county did receive $370,000, went toward the purchase of that property. In spring of 14, the commissioners approved the memorandum agreement, as I said earlier, with Wildlife to move forward with redevelopment of that site. Spring of 2015, Wildlife began the permitting process. Signage has been installed on site, and they're scheduled to start demolition and the other improvements in November. I see a photo of the site here. It's an aerial of the phase one with our new pictometry software that we have. You see that Wildlife is planning to demolish basically everything that's on the site now, the ruins from the former seafood business that were devastated in the last hurricane, including some of the obstacles in the water, former pylons, old pylons, former docks that is, et cetera. And their plan is to replace the single ramp that's not in very good shape with a double, a larger double ramp, redo all the bulkheads, additional parking, change the curb cuts a little bit. So for our current phase, Commissioners directed staff in spring of 14 to move forward with seeking funding for the phase two land acquisition. That was by a resolution on May 5th, 2014. Spring of 15, Mideast submitted, again, the same public access grant, pre-grant application, spread the land acquisition for phase two. And this time, we requested $250,000 in grant funding. In 2000, or in summer of 15, we were invited by Kama to submit our final application for phase two. Application should be due October 16. And I'd like to point out, Kama's got approximately $900,000 in grant funding this year, and they've received more than, or approximately $2.4 million in grant requests, and they've invited us to resubmit at $200,000, which is an indication that they're willing to dedicate 22% of their total budget this year to continue on with this project. So the next phase here, the next step would be October 5th of this year. County is to hold a required public hearing to discuss the phase two proposal. We can do that at the October 5th meeting. And the county, through Mideast, will submit the final application by the October 16th deadline. So we've got an aerial of the entire property, this phase two property located, highlighted by this large area of high ground, comes around, access at the end of the canal there. And these are photos taken from that piece of high ground looking back towards Buddy Seafood. And these photos were taken just after a two-inch rain, since it's a large area of sandy soil that's certainly very well-drained. And here's from Buddy Seafood looking back at the phase two property. Get a good idea of the elevation change going up. So staff's recommendation would be board approve. Staff to move forward with the final application process, the 15-16 cycle for this Kama Public Beach and Coastal Waterfront Access Program, with the commitment of the $200,000 local contribution toward the phase two of this project.
Anything for Seth?
Seth, you want to back up and show the part the owner would like to retain?
Yes, sir. Appreciate you bringing that up.
You had an aerial shot of it, I think.
If the owner has asked to retain a one-acre piece here, has existing trailer, would like to keep that for a family relative.
That does not interfere with our access, right?
No, sir, not at all. I see it clearly from the access here. It comes around like that.
Seth, is that something new? That he just wants to keep that one acre? I mean...
Yeah, that's, sir, that's...
This is the first time that I've heard that.
Yeah.
No, it came up because of the fact that the price was 450, and they, because of the Wildlife Commission only having 200,000 in funding, if we stick with a 50-50 match, the price drops to 400.
But my question was, the original price, it was the whole parcel, because I hadn't seen this trailer since this point, this acre cut out until...
Yes, sir. This is new to the equation.
That's what, that was my question. Was that new?
Yes, sir.
Because of the price drop of 50?
Yeah, it is. It's a $50,000 deduct.
Right. For waterfront law, acre of land on the water.
He's not waterfront.
Okay, but it's adjoining, this is, it's adjoining the water, isn't it?
And actually, he won't have access to the water except for the boat ramp.
Okay.
Actually, about half of that acre is wetland, best I understand.
You can see the line that runs and areas hats out is wetland areas.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just, this is just something new that I just... Do I have a motion to accept?
So move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you have a budget amendment involved with this as well that we'd like you to take as well. I mean, it's part of it. And then, of course, it would all be contingent upon us getting that grant, that grant coming through.
Want to add that into your motion?
Yes.
Okay. He'll add that into his motion. Any discussion?
I've got some questions. How much money is the county going to have in this thing when it's over with?
$200,000?
I think we had 137 in the first.
The first one, we're going to have 200,000 in this one.
Yes, sir.
Who's going to ultimately wind up with the deed for this property?
Beaufort County. We would just lease.
You will lease it to Wildlife.
Will you have a memorandum of understanding with them for the boat ramp?
Who's going to have the environmental liability that goes with this?
That would be the county.
Well, you see, that high ground there that you're calling high ground is actually a dredge spoil pile pond from dredging Wright's Creek, and the toe of the dike on that, on the east end, is at the water. So if you have a hurricane come through, and you have surge, and it eats away at the bank like it does when we have a lot of wave action on these things, and you break into that spoil pile pond, you're going to have it back out in the creek, in which case the Corps of Engineers is going to come to you and say, dredge the creek and fix it back like it was, and probably be an act of God, so you probably wouldn't get a fine out of it. But there's some liability that goes with this property.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
That area's been dredged two times. The last time it was done was somewhere around 1985, so it's been there for almost 30 years.
30 years to be exact.
The last storm in 2011 was the worst one that Pamlico Beach had ever seen, and there was 44 inches of water in that building where the old fish ash used to be. I've driven my truck all over that, and it has grass on it, and it's being mowed. I just don't see the environmental problem. I mean, it was sand, and it was oyster shells.
Mr. Chairman, look, what happens on these things is you don't know which way the rake, as it's commonly called from the storm, is going to come. If the rake lines up on that east edge and it sits there long enough, it will take the dike out. Regardless of Mr. Waters' opinion, I happen to do these things. So it will take the dike out, and at that point, you will get very rapid erosion of what is left there. So, you know, one of your options here is to have the Wildlife to put a substantial bulkhead around that property as part of your deal with them, to make sure that your property doesn't disappear during a storm, because it can get it, and it will get it, if it lines up on it right. Now, that may never happen, but you need to understand, this is a risky piece of property.
Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six one. Moving on. Thank you, Seth. Mr. Parker?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you remember, last month, we talked about doing revaluation again. It's, you might not think so, but it's fast approaching again, so it soon will be time. So I talked to Mr. Fred Pearson. I have Mr. Fred Pearson and Mr. Bob Pearson are in the audience tonight if you need to ask questions. And I think you've seen his contract. I hope everybody's seen his contract. It's $21 a parcel. That's $2 less than it was last time, so reduction quite a bit there. And that's based on 45,500 parcels. If it varies, we will have to pay the difference. Or if we got too many, I think it comes back to us. Anyway, it's something we can't get pinpointed right now. I'm here tonight to ask you to approve this contract with Pearson Appraisals to conduct the 2018 revaluation project.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion?
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
And for Pearson's, I guess, and for Bobby, too.
And for Pearson's, I guess, and for Bobby, too. Within the way that we're valuing parcels, and we just talked about a lot of parcels, this valuation should be done by combining parcels for tax purposes that can be combined. And I would like to see included in the contract that where parcels are joined each other, multiple parcels, that those parcels be by the same ownership, that those parcels be combined into one parcel as a part of what they're doing and valued. This will save some taxpayers a good deal of money. It will also keep taxpayers who presently are, we have what I don't think is a very good system, for being told, you need to go get, and I'm a surveyor, that you have to go get this property surveyed, and you have to combine it all in a survey and bring it to us, and then we'll combine them. That's not the practice most places, and I would like to see this issue cleared up in this appraisal to the benefit of the taxpayers. Is that possible?
I could be wrong, but I think most farm area last year, if it was a 100-acre tract and a 10-acre tract, it was valued at contiguous 110 acres, is that right, Mr. Pearson? I believe that's the way, that's the way we saw it.
What about, what about smaller parcels?
I think we need to talk with Department of Revenue about that, and find out what their legal requirements are, if it's separated by deed, I think you have to keep it as a separate parcel.
Red, come on up here, will you? And Bob, take a moment. I don't like speaking here.
I think that's a good idea, and I think it's something we need to look into, but I think we need to talk with Department of Revenue about that. It's my understanding that if it's separated by deed, we have to appraise it as a separate parcel. Now, one thing we need to know is, do they have another building site on that property? If they don't, that definitely affects value quite a bit.
Right, right. Well, I'd like for you to see if this can be cleared up in this revaluation, because we have, we have plenty of parcels like this, and stuff is carried as, you know, a tenth of an acre that somebody bought to add to his lot should not be a separate appraisal. That's, you know, that just jacks tax rates up.
In that instance, it's just contributory value. How much is that tenth of an acre going to add, and it'd add very little?
Add very little, but it's still appraised as a separate parcel.
Well, you look and see, what would it sell altogether, and then you distribute so much to where the main site is, and it'd be a very small amount.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm trying to do, if it's possible, is to clean up the tax books on some of this sum, because we've got an awful lot of parcels, and jibs and jabs that are in the same ownership. You know, we need to try to combine them if it's possible, and as you pointed out, I don't know whether it's possible or not, but it's definitely something that needs to be addressed. Now, if farmers can do it, everybody else should be able to do it, just as you just said, Bobby. We did it for farmers, we did it for farmers, we need to do it for the little man, too.
I think what Bobby was saying is that when we went to appraise a farm, and it had four or five different tracts of land within it all joined, we looked at the values being one piece of property.
But they still got five tax bills?
Yes.
But we valued it at 150 acres, if it totaled out to be 150 acres, because the size factor is making it...
Well, I'm getting complaints from people saying that there was misvaluation done on some of these smaller parcels, that why is this one, you know, this size, and this one is so much more valuable? There's an adjustment thing to be done there, that we really need to watch what we're doing this...
I think you've got a good point, there'll be other things like that we need to look into. Our objective is to give everybody a fair and equitable assessment.
Yeah, y'all, and you have always done that. I mean, you guys appraised for us before, you've done a great job of appraisal, and we know how it is, but so, but your reputation is uncontested.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I believe if they have a deed, that, you know, separate property, it's separate, and it has to be that way in a tax law. But if, just in case it doesn't, I would assume you go back to the homeowner and see if they want to combine those parcels, because there's, I know a number of people, for reasons, they have them separate, they have separate deeds on them.
Well, what we'll do is look and see how the property's going to sell, and we look at what the value would be if that two pieces of property would sell together. And then we have to allocate so much for maybe the primary parcel, which has a house on it, and so much for the other piece that probably is a non-billable piece of property.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're protecting the individual resident who wants to have this separate property.
Yes, and when we finish...
They don't have any deed, they can't take the deed. We're talking about for tax purposes, Commissioner Buzzing, we're not talking about doing things to people's deeds.
I know exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, well, thank you, I'm grateful that you do.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of accepting this contract, raise your right hand.
Well, what is the amount of the contract?
955,000. Did you read your book?
I read my book, but the public didn't read my book. The public deserves to know.
Bobby, how much is it? 955,000.
All right, I can vote for it.
500.
7-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate you all coming in.
Thank you very much.
John Pike?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, just for clarity, that's based on an estimate of 45,500 parcels, at $21 per parcel, so plus or minus, says the parcel numbers go up or down?
We've heard the plus or minus.
John, you waited patiently.
Thank you.
It's usually first. I was asking what I was doing behind him.
Is this another PowerPoint?
Sir, I'm going to try to do it, that PowerPoint, if you all are with me.
You're a great man, and my eyes...
Then I better put my eyes on to make sure I could... Sir, if you'll get to page 332, those of you that have your pockets open, we had 10 companies that submitted proposals back to us. That's six more than we've ever had in the nine years that I've been here, and only one of the companies did the staff have to set aside, and they failed to follow the directions of the RFP and provide the necessary data to be able to be considered with the other nine. So nine companies were evaluated. I've given you a breakdown on tonnage, cubic yards, and where some of the information came from. One of the items that is different that we added in the last RFP we sent out was the actual management and setup of the temporary debris sites. That's the responsibility of the company that we hire. Now, we'll have to monitor it, but they'll be responsible for putting the gravel and the road network in there. They'll be responsible for cleaning up when it's done as part of this contract if we get a federal disaster. This contract doesn't cost us a dime unless we have a federal disaster and we have to implement re-removal. That's the one thing about this contract, I'm not asking you for a bunch of money tonight.
That's a good thing.
But I wanted you to, that debris removal proposal was, was one of the things that drove the train here. On page 336, you all will be able to read the numbers. Under purchasing guidelines, we're not supposed to divulge the names of the other companies, only the company that we're recommending's bid. Now, I was trying to be very careful about how we did that, but under, when we're presenting like this, this is the timeframe where I show you what the staff's recommended, and I'll show, and in this case, I showed you what number one and two behind them's figures, main figures were. And SDR was not the low bidder on the cubic yard, but they were on the tonnage. And going back to Irene, we had five times the tonnage on C and D, construction and demolition debris, that the Department of Highways had on vegetative debris. So in using that as a, as a leverage, the tonnage rate, which is what the commission in the past has asked us to do, run everything across scales, so you have some measurement. You can't always do that, sometimes you have to use cubic yards for vegetative, if you don't have scales, you don't want to haul something all the way around the horn to go to a scale and run an extra 50 or 60 miles. You can do it by cubic yard, we bring surveyors in and do it that way on the site and measure the piles, but using the tonnage, using the cost of maintaining and doing that management of temporary debris sites, which we expected the town of Aurora to do last time, which we've expected other people to do, could become very difficult if we have a major storm, and we're having to set up temporary sites in three or four places. The town of Pantego has said, we want to be part of your debris removal contract, because we don't have any city equipment. There's been expressed interest from Bath, or Aurora's definitely interested in, yeah, we may be able to get our streets clear, but we want to take it to a transfer point the way we did last time. That's where our contract comes back in and picks up, taking it from there. And then on page 337, what you're seeing tonight, together with some of the other figures, I sent to North Carolina Emergency Management Public Assistance Officer, asked him, here's our RFP, here's the synopsis of all the contractors, and what their quotes were, has our staff come up with a logical recommendation that will be supported by FEMA if they come in here? Because we don't want to argue when FEMA gets here. He sent it to Region Four to their Public Assistance Officer, who said, we would have no objections. They can't endorse any company, but we have no objections with the way that you have gone through the procedure of setting up your evaluation criteria and conducting your evaluation of the bids. So I just thought I'd put that out there, that's not particularly in the slide, but it's something that has occurred since then. In the process, we have become very familiar with the Secretary of State's Office in Louisiana, Texas, South Carolina, and Florida, because the majority of these companies are housed in Florida, Louisiana, and Texas. However, SDR, the one we're recommending, is housed out of Greenville, South Carolina. Contacted EM personnel in the states of South, emergency management personnel do what I do, South Carolina, North Carolina, Virginia, and then I called FEMA Region Four. I wanted to see if anybody was on the naughty list that we should not consider, and NCMPA. I also contacted the counties around us to see, some of them have been doing the same thing we're doing, see who they had selected. Based on all this information, and I, like I say, I've been in this business a long time, and never had 10 of them, have to go through, I honestly believe SDR, A, it's closest, so mobilization will take the least amount of time, B, they've got a $10 million check from three different banks that are willing to back them with 10 million bucks upfront. The letters are in the packet. I called the banks to make sure. I checked with Secretary of State's Office, I checked with Better Business Bureau to make sure, in one of the cases, one of the companies was a shell company. There were eight corporations at one address, and each of them had two trucks. That one didn't get as high a rating on the evaluation criteria, but that's the level to which we've gone to try to make sure when somebody says they can do something, can they really do it? This gentleman has also contacted our local contractors to see who would be interested in participating before we submitted the bid. He talked with Shavanders, he talked with several of the other smaller contractors to see if they were interested in participating, which is one thing that we had in there. Did he get involved in the local community? In talking to the other emergency managers, he stayed with them through the whole FEMA process. From there, most of them had a lot of ice storms last year that ended up being federal. And they said, he was there when they did their clearance evaluations with FEMA. They came in to make sure all the, their paperwork was right, never charged them a dime for any of it, it was just part of the service that they wanted to provide. So that is why we're recommending that SDR, you allow us to enter into a contract with SDR for three years. We would like to negotiate a contract with them, there's still a couple of issues that I would like to see us take a look at in contracts that are to Beaufort County's benefit. And implicit with allowing the staff to do that, I presented the contract back to you in October. I hope to have the contract ready for our attorney next, in the next week, just in case something comes our way, so that if we had to ask for an emergency meeting of you all to approve a contract, we've already negotiated it with the company, and we've already got one laying there waiting for the next commission meeting, and can go forward. That way, we also know that they're prepared to come to us. We would be the only county in North Carolina that has a contract with SDR. There are three coastal towns that do, small towns, in the Atlantic Beach area, but we would be the first county that SDR has put a bid in that's as competitive as what they put in, because they want to get a foothold up here in North Carolina. And like I say, they've got the financial backing and everything else. Implicit with this would also be permission for us to enter into the negotiations with the Department of Highways for, to do the vegetative debris removal from the rightaways. They will clear the roads. We call these people up, this is what attracted all these companies to us, because we're doing the vegetative debris that highways used to do. That makes it a lot more enticing financially for them to come, because their equipment's going to come and not being moved back and forth. They go straight from vegetative into C and D. So it's a good transition, and it's good for us. That's our recommendation, pertinent to any of your all's questions. I will be happy to get that case out of the way and put it up on the shelf, ready for the next disaster.
Anyone have anything for, John?
I have a...
Go ahead.
Two questions. Do they have the resources to handle a county this size?
Yes, sir.
And my other question is, is, just clarify something to me, for me. Would they handle, let's say a hurricane comes through or tornado or something and takes trees down, people's property, and they move it to the roadway, would they take care of that also?
They will only clean what is placed on the state, maintained right away on roads that are maintained by the state.
By the state?
The state.
So if a resident is on a road that came by the state and puts it out on that roadway or the side of the road, they'll pick that up?
Yeah, that's part of the C and D pickup, yes, sir. Now, it's got to be a public road debt, we're not an indicated communities.
I understand that.
I mean, I'm just wondering here, I was looking at the tonnage, storage for the tonnage and everything, you had a broad, $7.25 and $46 per ton. What determines whether he gets $7.25 or $46 a ton?
What we did was, we, when we sent the RFP out, we sent it out with the A, B, and C zones on the map, which dealt with the reimbursement they were going to get for the amount of miles they had to travel with the debris in their trucks. And some vegetative, we may have to do cubic yard. I don't like cubic yard, I really like running everything across scales, because you got to wait then to do everything by. And so therefore, that is why we averaged it out for each of them, so we could have fair numbers on what the average cost on the big two were. But then I didn't anticipate there being that big a difference on managing the debris sites. And when I saw that, I said, we better put that one in there, too, because there's a huge difference there. Some people were wanting $1,200 a ton to move white goods. Another guy wanted $2,000 a ton to move spoiled stuff out of refrigerators. And it really, those aren't our high ones. But I will say this, electronic waste has to be treated differently this disaster, and electronic waste to FEMA is television, computer monitor, and a computer. It's the only three things they want pulled out is electronic waste. And some of those numbers, a lot of the counties went ahead and did it per item, and so for every TV they picked up, they got $35. I started adding that up, well, that's a real good deal for those companies at $35. So we asked FEMA specifically, and I have it in approved email from FEMA Region Four's Public Assistance Officer to do it by the ton, because that's better for the taxpayers.
Thank you, John. What's the pleasure of the board? Got a motion, anybody second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If none, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? 7-0. If we'll get a chance, I'll pick the TVs, all right? Mr. Allagood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is an item regarding the appointment of members to the hospital authority board. You'll see that there are three appointments that expire on September the 30th of this year, Mr. Kidwell, Mr. Simpson, and Mr. Richardson, they are eligible for reappointment to the hospital board. You have included in your packet the general statutes that details the appointment procedures. You can disregard the second paragraph in there. You have a letter from Commissioner Richardson requesting that the board... You have a letter from Commissioner Richardson requesting that the board, the hospital authority board recommends reappointment of those three individuals to their seats beginning October 1 of '15.
Is that a motion, Hood?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Got it. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Reference to Chapter 131E, Subchapter 131E-18, Subchapter G, a county with a population of less than 75,000, according to the most recent federal census, the following exceptions and provisions section shall apply. The commissioner shall be appointed by the county board of commissioners rather than chairman of the county board of commissioners. In making appointments under the section D of this section, the county board of commissioners shall consider nominations of the commissioners of the authority. The county board of commissioners not bound by denomination may choose any qualified person. Based upon that, my motion is that we appoint Commissioner Langley, Commissioner Waters, and Commissioner Buzio to the hospital authority.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six zero. Thank you, Mr. Allagood. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Your second item is the Page Road...
Six one, excuse me. Katie, help, six one.
Okay. The next item is the Page Road Extension Project. You'll see that on October the 31st, we opened bids for that project. We received two bids, the low bid being submitted by B.E. Singleton in Sunny, the amount of $314,355. You have attached a certified bid tab and a recommendation of award letter from McGill Associates, who's the engineering firm handling the job. The bid is below the engineer's estimate and is within the project budget. Also, you have an attachment that's from McGill Associates in the amount of $21,959 for the project construction administration services. The funding for these services are also included in the budget, and funding for this entire project came from the North Carolina Department of Commerce Industrial Development Fund Grant and requires no local match. We have exempted, the county has exempted itself from the Mini Brooks Act because the project is less than $50,000, and McGill Associates has the familiarity with the job. So we would recommend to you that you accept the bid from B.E. Singleton, the amount of $314,355 for construction of the Page Road extension, and authorize the administrative services contract with them for construction administration in the amount of $21,959.
What's the pleasure of the board?
And allow us to issue those transactions.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second, any discussion?
I'd like to ask...
Go ahead.
Page 352, I don't know why I'm reading this wrong, Brian.
352?
Yeah, you tell me.
Yes, sir.
It's a construction subtotal of 399, 275, but the bid was 314. Where did the other 85,000 come from?
I'm sorry, say it didn't...
On page 352, it says the construction subtotal is 399, 275.
Table 1, detailed cost estimate.
Yeah, that's the...
Is that a wrong figure?
No, sir. On page 352 is the engineer's estimate.
That's nothing but an estimate, but when the bid came in, it was 314?
Yes, sir. If you look on page 351, you'll see the bid tab.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. So what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, is this 352, we just disregard it?
I'm not sure about the 399, 272, the construction subtotal on page 252?
352.
352. Yes, sir, that's the engineer's estimate.
That's just the estimate.
So he was thinking that's where it would come in, and it actually came in under that.
I didn't know whether there had been a mix-up in figures or not. So we just throw this out.
As always asked, my favorite question, is there no change orders with this deal, is there?
Well, our hope is there aren't any. It's a pretty straightforward job. There's a, the big difference between the two bids was grading, and Singleton is very confident in their bid. We've discussed it with them, so we're confident that we'll be okay.
That's good, I just have a hard change order.
I do, too. Yes, sir.
See, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is an item for decision on purchase of real property. Just some discussion regarding that. As you'll recall, at the July 7th meeting, the board instructed staff in closed session on its negotiating position for the purchase of real property located adjacent to the county courthouse. That property consists of three tax parcels with a combined area of 262 acres. You have the general description as 132 West Second Street and 136 West Second Street. You have the identity of the parcel of numbers. The owner of record is First Bank. You'll also see that there was an appraisal done by Jack Raspus Appraisals in September of 2014 with a fair market value of $652,000. The property is being offered for purchase in order to provide expansion opportunities for the county programs and facilities. The negotiated offer price for the property is $475,000. You're probably aware, First Bank is proposing to move its operations from its current location to a different location within the city out on 15th Street. They're currently conducting due diligence on that property. They've got some work and some engineering work, some renovation work to do on that property before they close, or to line it up and be sure they can do with it before they close on it. And they anticipate taking about 12 months to be able to do what they need to do to renovate the property to be able to get in it. What they would like to do is if they're able to close on that piece of property, we would close on their piece of property. They would turn around and lease that building back from the county at a rate of $40,000 for 12 months. They also have asked for an additional six month, month to month, if they need it. They don't anticipate needing it, but they want to make sure they have an additional six months if they need it. And that rate would be at $3,333.33, same amount as it would on the per-month basis for $40,000 for a year. They have also asked to be able to lease the current, two current parking places and the space that's occupied in the building for their ATM and their night depository drop, and be able to have access to be able to use that. That would be a dollar a year for a lease term of 10 years, inclusive of the original leased property. So you have some statutory requirements in there that you can't go beyond 10 years, and they're okay with that. And we would give them reasonable access to the building during regular office hours to service and maintain that equipment. Funding for the purchase for this property would come from the general fund, and you have a budget amendment attached. They anticipate wrapping up their due diligence and being able to close on their property 30 to 45 days. We're currently working with them on getting the contracts put together so that we don't slow them down. If you agree to move forward, we don't want to slow anybody down on this. So our recommendation to you on that is to consider approving that offer to purchase with the proposed lease agreement in the material, the way it's materially been described here, and allow us to move forward with putting those required documents together, the county attorney and I, and wait for that execution if they're able to close on their piece of property.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Bet that amount again, the purchase price?
475.
Okay.
And with that, you'd get a turnaround of $40,000 for a 12-month lease.
The square feet is that building, Brian?
Sir?
The square feet is that building?
Square feet.
God, I don't know.
A lot of square feet.
Yeah. Are we getting market value for the lease?
Well, according to the appraisal that was done by Jack Raspus in 2014, the appraised value at fair market value was 652,000.
I'm just talking about for the lease.
You're talking about lease?
Per square foot?
Yes.
Yeah, it's about, it's about right. I think it was $6 a square foot or something like that. I think that's what the going rate was at the time of the appraisal.
What is it now?
Well, it was just appraised.
It's really not material that we get a fair price for it, it's a part of the contract. It's a part of the purchase contract, so it becomes immaterial.
It's material, I mean, it's material if I wanted to know. And I asked what we're getting fair market price.
Well, you know.
No, we don't.
Yes, you do. The chairman just answered. You don't believe the chairman, you think he's not telling you the truth?
He told me what we're getting for it. He didn't tell me what fair market price was.
He said it was about fair market price, which was about $6 a square foot. What part of that don't you understand?
Hood.
Come on, let's go.
Hood, I'd be glad when the election is over, because you're about to go crazy.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with this land purchase with the budget amendment attached to 480,000, and that we give the staff the permission or the opportunity to go ahead and issue the lease and the contract as recommended.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Not, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six one. Moving right along. Mr. Allagood?
Yes, sir. You there, sorry. Given over item 11, it was pulled from the agenda. Item 12 is the Region Q Workforce Development Board Appointments. With the new Federally Funded Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act, there are new requirements that are in place for the Region Q Workforce Development Board. And as you'll recall, on June 15th, this board approved the new Region Q Workforce Investment Consortium Agreement. That includes Beaufort, Bertie, Hertford, Martin, and Pitt. And the language is in there, it talks about the representatives who will serve on that board. There are two business representatives that are appointed by the board for each of those counties to serve on this board, in conjunction with the COG, and there are discussions with folks who are active in the workforce development right now. Our recommendation to you, and I have one change there, our recommendation to you is Ms. Brenda Davis, who is the VP of Corporate HR at Flanders Filters, and who's in the category of advanced manufacturing, and Ms. Lauren Horton, who is the HR manager for Hackney, also in the category of advanced manufacturing, that those be the two appointments that this board consider to put on the Workforce Development Board. You'll recall, Kim Toler with Potash Corp., Aurora, currently serves on that board. She will continue to serve on that board, but she would serve in the capacity of an individual whose company deals with lots of apprenticeships. And that was, that appointment is done by the consortium members, which is made up of the county managers in those counties. So we would recommend to you that you appoint those two folks to that Workforce Development Board.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
Got a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Seven one. Seven zero, that's good. Mr. Allagood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, I've got a couple of brief updates for you. Some of this, just want to make sure everybody's aware of. Couple items, the VOA site, as you're aware, on August the 27th, the North Carolina Wildlife Commission voted to acquire the entire VOA site for conservation and game land potential. We've been in contact with Mr. Isaac Harold, who's the program manager for engineering and lands management for wildlife, and he's anticipating the timeframe for their acquisition is in October. They will present and seek approval from Government Operations Committee. In November, they'll present and seek approval from the Council of State, and at that time, they anticipate submitting an application to the National Park Service. Once that occurs, our conversation with the National Park Service says that we would hopefully be able to transfer our constructive possession to the state at that time. And then by the end of the year, the hope is that they're able to transfer the deed to the property. Just a little bit of an update on where you are so far, year-to-date, or fiscal year-to-date so far on VOA operations. This fiscal year, we spent about $6,500. So if you roll that forward, it comes out to be about $20,000 toward the end of the year. You budgeted $50,000 in this year's for that operation. Now, currently, this fiscal year, there's been some work replacing some controllers and some lamp replacements that we have to do to make sure that the lights are kept on for FAA requirements, so that nobody flies into those towers. The monthly utility bill is about $1,500. So barring any major hardware work that's needed to keep those towers lit, you'll probably be able to get out of it by the end of this year for about $13,000. So that's where the VOA site property sits. Next item is the EMS study. You recall, the presentation was given by the consultant at the last meeting. We've been in contact with him. He anticipates having his final written report. We anticipated it by this meeting. He was unable to do that, had not finished it. I spoke with him today. He says the written report will be submitted within the next two weeks. This will allow us time internally for staff to review and make comments and discussions with him for a presentation at the October 5th board meeting. My question to you is, we need some direction from the board as we move forward, on how we move forward after that October 5th presentation. Example, you know, are you interested in us having some public comment periods on that, spreading it out around the county, making some presentations? Just need to know how you want to move forward with that as we receive that, after we receive that document, and that you get it in October. If you want us to do that, we'd like to go ahead and start planning those things.
Have any comments from the board?
I think we already have a meeting scheduled in Bell Haven for October the 13th, which will be kind of a question and answer, public. And I think as massive as this report is, and it affects the entire county, that we should, you know, go from Bell Haven to other communities and do the same thing.
Okay. How about it? Yep. Okay. Thank you. Last item I have for you is the Courthouse Security Project. As you're aware, there have been prior meetings with courthouse stakeholders regarding courthouse security concerns. Reasonable measures have been identified that would address many of those concerns. Those measures include non-recurring capital expenditures such as hardware and equipment, as well as recurring personnel costs to do that. So our objective to come to you in October is to present three options for this proposal. First of all, the first option would be just to maintain the status quo, which is doing what you're doing right now there, or, you know, with the sheriff's office handling the courtrooms and the courtroom security, or access to the courtrooms and courtroom security. That would be one of our proposals, which is pretty easy, just continue doing what you're doing. Then we'll provide for you a proposal that would provide the costs, that would provide the sheriff's office with materials and personnel it needs to manage the security for the entire facility, which we would envision as access control, corridor control, and continued security within the courtrooms themselves. And then the third option we would bring to you is the cost of providing a private security firm to handle the exterior access control and corridor patrols with the sheriff's department maintaining its status quo within the courtroom security. And what we will do is, we're continuing to meet with those folks and with the sheriff's department, sheriff's office, to define that scope of what that outside security firm would need to do. So wanted to let you know that's where we were with that, get any feedback you may have based on those three proposals, and let you know that's where we anticipate coming back to you.
Okay.
Well, I'll comment on it. Why don't you consider securitizing the judges' offices with a wall up there, key locks, I mean, coded locks or whatever, and some security cameras, and let the sheriff keep doing what he's doing?
There is some hardware pieces in there, both the hardware, and we'll show you that. We'll show you the hardware piece, as well as the personnel piece, but that's an option we could do as well.
We need, we need to look at, that's a practical option that doesn't cost very much money.
Well, I think, I think from that side...
The rest of this stuff's a lot of tax money.
Yes, I think from that side, the equipment piece is something, if you do anything, you're probably going to do the equipment piece, the access control, the electronic access control, and the hallway monitoring from cameras. But with that, you've got to have somebody dedicated to watch those cameras. So there's some personnel costs that would come with that.
Well, really, if you look at one of the options, you don't really need to have somebody dedicated to watching the cameras, because you would, it would be like at a Zim Mart or something. You would use it after you've had an incident. Because let's face it, we don't have that many incidents. Why would we need somebody sitting there watching something 10 hours a day, 12 hours a day, and we don't have a record of incidents?
I don't want you to watch me getting shot.
That would be a security option that would pay off.
We'll be glad to break some of those things out before you take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Katie, would you read us into closed session, please?
An objection is needed to go into closed session for North Carolina Statute 143-318-118. To consult with an attorney employed or retained by a public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which is per religious by knowledge.
Have a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the vote...
Brian, could you address that?
Excuse me?
I'm not sure what she's going to say.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the vote of county citizens for better government, I object to the motion for going into closed session.
Brian, can you address that?
I'm not sure what her objection is.
We need the thumbnail description of what, why we're going into a closed session.
You can speak my state of my objection, which is the topic of discussion is not going to identify as required by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11AC.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to address that. Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to address that. Part of, part of what we do as staff is to try to make sure that the process is done right. The, the policy decisions that you make as a board are your decisions to make. Our, our objective as staff is to make sure you, you do those in the right manner. And I'd like, I have a, I have a, a local government law review that was done by David Lawrence, who is an expert with, who is, Dr. Lawrence, or President Lawrence served with the School of Government for over 40 years before he retired. His opinions have been quoted by the North Carolina Supreme Court, and he wrote a specific law, government law journal regarding closed sessions under the attorney-client privilege. And I'd like to read to you from that, numbers, item number seven says, "If a closed session concerns an existing lawsuit, the motion to go into closed session must identify the parties to the lawsuit. Such specificity is not necessary for other closed sessions within the authorization." GS 143-318-11C permits a public body to go into closed session only upon a motion made and voted on in open session. In general, such a motion must cite one of the purposes for which the statute permits a closed session to be held. Applying that to the authorization under discussion, a motion for a closed session could be stated more or less as follows. I move we now hold a closed session to preserve the public body's attorney-client privilege. Or, I move we now hold a closed session to discuss our attorney, with our attorney, a matter within the attorney-client privilege. The statute does require a more specific motion in one circumstance. If the closed session is being held to discuss a specific existing lawsuit, the statute requires that the motion identify the parties to that lawsuit. Because of the statute's specificity, if the closed session is being held to discuss some other sort of proceeding that cannot be characterized as a lawsuit, such as an administrative procedure, the motion need only identify the specific, need not identify the specific proceeding. Furthermore, if the closed session is to discuss some matter other than a dispute, such as a proposed ordinance, the motion need to be no more specific than the examples set above. So based on that, and I had a conversation with Freida Bluestein, who, David Lawrence is retired, I had a conversation with Freida Bluestein to make sure that this was the latest, and that we were correct in that. So based upon this, your request to go into closed session to, to ensure the attorney-client privilege is proper and in order.
Thank you. I have a motion to go in closed session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six one. Okay, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Say aye.
Aye.